I will call the December 7, 2009 meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would the Secretary call the role, please?
Rick Morrison.
Here.
Nancy Pease.
Here.
Jim Frederick.
Here.
Tony Jones.
Here.
Arthur Ischam.
Here.
John Weddleton.
Here.
Bruce Phelps. Stacey Dean.
Here.
We have a quorum. The next items on our agenda are minutes for August 31, September 14, and October 12.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Move for approval of the minutes of August 31, 2009, September 14, 2009, and October 12, 2009.
Is there a second? Okay, it looks like it's been seconded by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Weddleton.
Withdrawn.
You withdraw. Thank you. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
I'm looking for the change. It's in the October 12. And let me just get the page. Page 35 of the October 12 minutes. Actually, the pages are different from the earlier version that I looked at, so I don't know if staff can help me find this or not. But it has to do with the change to Goal 9C. If the Chair would indulge me in looking for this, could we come back to this after we do disclosures?
Okay. Is that the October 12 minute?
October 12, yes.
Okay. Is there any objection to the other two sets of minutes we have before us? Hearing none. Those are approved. We'll move forward to the D, which is C, which are disclosures. Why do I always skip over C? Mr. Ischam.
Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
Yes. As before, when we've heard the issues on the Connect Arm Crossing, I have stated that I have no personal interest beyond that of any individual citizen. I do have family members who are active on both sides of this issue. And with regard to final approval of the bicycle plan under the consent agenda, I was absent for the vote on that issue, so I will be abstaining from that item on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frederick?
Yes, I do. In regard to case 2009-126, the public hearing re-zoned to R3, the petitioner's Lumen Design. In my role as the executive director of a nonprofit housing agency, we employed one of the principles of what is now Lumen Design, a previous company, to do architectural design for us. That contract has been paid off and closed for the last year and a half or so. I should also disclose that in my current role at another agency, had a brief discussion with Lumen Design about the project in question and whether we may have a role in participating in the project should it come to fruition. We left that discussion on the table and have not proceeded with it. Don't have any particular intention to.
Okay.
But in any case, my role in both cases was as an employee of an agency. One way or the other, I would have no particular financial interest in the outcome, one way or the other.
Okay. That was going to be my question, is you had any... So you would just basically prefer in your function as a member of that agency?
That's correct.
In your relationship?
Yep.
Okay. I don't believe that we have to vote on that. I think it's just a disclosure so we're aware of it. Thank you, sir.
I think this is a nonprofit agency, isn't it?
In both cases.
In both cases.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Yoshimura.
Yes. I have two disclosures. On both the... Well, I'll just mention this. They're being postponed to January 4, but both the cases for Grayling Land Development, LLC. I learned through one of our newest commissioners that this company has some sort of a relationship with Siri, and that a law firm that I work for represents the corporate parent, Siri. And when I asked the attorney about it, he had never heard of this entity. And he says, "Well, I don't think you have a conflict." So I went through the proper steps to check if there was any representations, and they aren't. They're a subsidiary of a subsidiary of Siri. And when this does come back up on the 4th, I'll rediscover it, but I don't have a conflict on that. I just want to put that on the record.
Very good.
And then on the AWU case, on the time extension, I have abstained from specific AWU cases because my law firm does represent AWU with regard to regulatory matters. And so I'm just mentioning I'll be abstaining from that.
It looks like that's been withdrawn.
No, that was the other case. This is the time extension, I think.
Oh, the time extension.
Yes. It hasn't... I don't believe that's been withdrawn from our consent agenda.
No, okay.
Unless I'm...
So you'll just abstain from voting on that particular one?
Yes. I'm just announcing that. And then on the resolution with regard to the bicycle plan, I was absent that evening, and so likewise, I will be abstaining from that. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dean.
Yes, I have the AMAS issue for Connect Arm Crossing, case 2009-148. I own property on the other side that I have speculated on that I could develop should the bridge go in, so I definitely have financial stake in that. So I shouldn't vote or be involved in that one at all. 2009-157, which is the Raspberry Road Improvement. My business is located about a block south of that intersection. It will be affected by that, although I don't have really any financial stake in whether it happens or not.
Could you give me those numbers again, please?
The first one for AMAS, that was 2009-148, which is E1.
And I think you've already been excused from that.
And the second one is 5A, which is 2009-157. That's expanding Raspberry Road between Arctic and Sea.
It's on the bottom of page three.
Anything further, Ms. Dean?
Okay, Mr. Morrison? I have one disclosure. I received a call today about resolution number 2009-047, the Hillside District Plan.
Do you have your microphone on, Mr. Morrison?
I do.
Okay.
The light's on.
Okay.
Is that a little bit better?
Yeah. About the Hillside District Plan. And it was a concern from AWU on some wording that we had already previously passed. I had a conversation with Chairman Jones about it today, just to find out what procedure was. And my understanding is we are accepting or rejecting the whole entire thing this evening and not going back to any debate or anything else on it. So I have no intention of any other actions in that.
Okay. But thank you for disclosing that, for that contact.
And I guess the disclosure is both the conversation I had with Chairman Jones and with the folks from AWU, so.
Very good. Okay. Let the record show that Mr. Phelps is here. Mr. Phelps, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
No.
Okay, fine. Mr. Weddleton?
No.
And I have none.
And I have one more. I thought I was done. And then I did receive a call from staff toward the end of this past week with regard to a request they had received from, I believe it was a representative of, I don't know if it was someone from AWU or if it was from their board, a board member at AWU requesting an opportunity to speak before we passed our resolution this evening. And I explained to staff that it would be my ruling that we had already taken action on the matter, and there is no more opportunity for input from interested parties once that has occurred. The matter is now before the body. Just to validate our action, we go back and review our minutes, review the draft resolution to check it for accuracy, and then approve it, and then it will go forward to the Assembly. There will be additional hearings at the Assembly level where anyone who has an interest in the Hillside District Plan or the bike plan, that we are also taking action on a resolution this evening, can go forward and testify before that body on these, because the only way they become law is through Legislative Act of the Assembly. So hopefully that clarifies procedurally what the steps are for this. But once we take action on a matter, we cannot bring it back before us unless someone spreads notice of reconsideration, and that has to occur within 24 hours of when we took action on the issue. And since that didn't occur in this instance, there's nothing more... We can't go and make any adjustments or changes that don't reflect the intent of the action we've already taken. Having made that clarification, Ms. Pease, have you found your place with regard to the minutes for October 12?
Yes, Madam Chair. Page 36 of the minutes. 1, 2, 3, 4. I guess it'll be the fifth paragraph just before the "I" and "nay." The language I proposed, which I handed out in written form for discussion, is correct except for one word, and that word is shown here as sufficient. It says, "Supporting sufficient growth patterns." And the wording I had given was "efficient," and it was probably just a little bit vague on the tapes.
So that's the only word you're changing?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any objection to that change? Hearing none. Is there any objection, then, to approval of those minutes as changed? Hearing none. They are approved. Now we move on to the consent agenda, which includes everything and item D1, D3, D4, and D5.
Madam Chair. Move for approval of the consent agenda. Items D1, A, B, and C; 3, B and C, because item A on that has been postponed; 4A, 5A, and B.
Okay. And Mr. Frederick has seconded it. And does anyone wish to pull any items?
Madam Chair.
I see Mr. Weddleton in the queue.
I'd like to pull a few of these. D1A on Hillside District Plan, B on the Walmart, C on the bicycle plan. Is 5 part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
5A, and 5B.
Ms. Pease, are there others you wish to pull?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to pull 3, B, and C.
All right. So that leaves, on our consent agenda, item 4A, if I'm looking at it correctly. Is there any objection to approving 4A? Hearing no objections. That is approved, and if the Secretary would note my abstention. All right. Mr. Weddleton, we'll start with you.
Could I start with... I'd like to make a motion to revise the agenda, and it looks like Commissioner Yoshimura has a comment.
I've been previously excused from this.
Excused from this?
Yes. That's the discussion I will...
Then it would be time for you to take your leave. Okay.
Could I make a motion to change the agenda?
Well, yes, now that we've excused Ms. Yoshimura, is it going to be moving it around?
A little bit. I would...
You might not want to leave just yet, Ms. Yoshimura.
I would move item E on the Connect Arm Crossing to the last item for the evening, if only because Commissioner Dean could then leave.
That's thoughtful.
And maybe make the Hillside District Plan thereabouts, too. Well, let's start with that.
To move...
Start with E first. Move E to the end of the agenda.
To move item E, unfinished business, to the end of the agenda. And I need you to put that in the form of a motion, and I need a second. Thank you, Mr. Ischam. Is there any objection? Seeing none. That is moved to the end... Item E is moved to the end of the agenda. So now we go back to the consent agendas, items that have been pulled. Mr. Weddleton, are you ready to proceed?
Well, on the Hillside District Plan, actually, I would... I think there are a few changes that Commissioner Pease had sent in that we...
Okay. I need to be clear about changes. They need to reflect clarifications of the action we've already taken. Is that what these proposed changes consist of, Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Okay. They're not something new?
No.
All right. We are on D1A, approval of the resolution for the Hillside District Plan. And this came as a separate packet to us, along with all of the attachments. Go ahead, Ms. Pease.
Yes, Madam Chair. The first change regards the conditions the commission approved for the Farrow Creek Transition Area. And we had asked staff to come back once they'd sort of recombined all of our ideas so that we could look at the language one more time. So this constitutes looking at that language one more time. And we discovered, we, meaning the subcommittee, discovered that there was a contradiction between a buffer, minimum buffer width of 50 feet around these denser transition subdivisions that we approved in our, I think, August 31 minutes, and what we discussed and approved in an October 12 discussion. So the subcommittee has recommended that the perimeter buffer, as shown there in yellow on the cover page of our memo, be at least 25 feet deep when abutting or across the street. And it's worded right now to say, "From lots of an acre or greater developed with residential uses." I don't think this was quite right, because in our new Title 21, the R6 will not be acre lots, it will be 40,000 square foot lots, which is less than an acre. So to sort of get in line with our new R6 lots, Commissioner Weddleton and I discussed it and think it should say that the buffer shall be at least 25 feet deep when abutting or across the street from residential lots of 40,000 square feet or greater, as opposed to the wording that's on the page right in front of us, staff wording.
Okay. And in crafting these clarifications, did you and Mr. Weddleton meet with the municipal staff in discussing them?
We did meet with municipal staff and come up with about 25-foot minimum. And then after we went away, we fired back and forth some emails to clarify that you didn't have to do this buffer if there was a church or school. And then we thought about, well, what if it's already a small lot development? Do you have to buffer that? So we did have some email subcommittee discussion after a physical meeting.
Okay. All right. Do you want to go through the rest of them, and then I'll see if there are questions from your fellow commissioners?
The second minor correction was just a sentence on page four of the resolution in Policy Now I'm looking at the wrong copy. I have so many copies. This matches Commissioner Weddleton's intent. We just were trying to clarify what is meant by Anchorage sets criteria, where all regions share the responsibility. And we came up with a replacement sentence, and then committee decided we take out that sentence, Anchorage sets criteria. That just didn't happen in the staff write-up.
Ms. Pease, what paragraph are you in?
I think it's number four. Is it number four, on page four?
Yes, Policy 4 on page four.
Okay. Thank you.
And the next change is on page five of the resolution, the last bullet. And here again, staff was asked to come back with final wording regarding our intent, our rationale for the Farrow Creek Transition Area. And the sentence was just, used the word metro area, which is vague and wasn't grammatical. So I have proposed that it should read, "Highly sought after because the Anchorage Bowl has limited opportunities for new moderate-density residential development close to jobs and services," with no comma before "close to jobs and services." Again, this was new staff language, so seems that refining it is reasonable.
And where are we finding that? I don't see that, Ms. Pease.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
That's in the attachment. Attachment on page...
Five.
Five.
It's under Policy 2D, section called Background. And there are six bullets highlighted in yellow, and it's the last bullet.
We don't know which page, Ms. Pease.
If I may, you all have a resolution, and then following the resolution, there's an attachment A.
And this is 5 of 31.
Page 5 of 31.
Of that attachment A.
A.
Gotcha.
Okay. So if you're there now, it says, "Highly sought after in metro area lacking opportunities." And that wasn't clear and grammatical. The next is in this, it's in Appendix B, Goal 9C, and wherever else Goal 9C appears. And as I corrected, some correction I made in the minutes, the goal should read, "Making optimum use of existing infrastructure and supporting efficient growth patterns, not sufficient growth patterns." The next one is just minor typing errors that make it a little hard to read on Goal And the final one has to do with roadmap 4.1. On page 17 of our attachment, same attachment, we passed a footnote that's supposed to go on map 4.1 regarding the special study areas. And if you look on the map 4.1 that was handed out, there were some extra words added that soften our intent. So I'm just asking that the map footnote reflect the language that we have previously approved.
Thank you, Ms. Pease. Mr. Weddleton, do you have anything to add?
In addition to those, and this may first be dealt with a question of staff, but the boundaries on some of these maps are a little bit different than we'd been using previously. And looking, if you're still at map 4.1, the orange boundary for the Hillside District area originally went along the Seward Highway, and now it follows the old Seward Highway and then does a little jog up Potter Valley Road and comes back down to the lines we'd been using before. And so Ms. Contreras can...
Yeah. I did talk with our technician, and it's because of the overlap of lines, the yellow lines will eventually come off, and we'll be able to see the orange line. The orange line is actually there. If we can't see it clearly, we'll make sure we can. We may have to do something like lightening the, you know, the different areas. But we understand the problem, and the boundary is the same. It's just not clear because of the overlap of lines.
But what is this orange line, then, that goes east of Potter Marsh and so on? And then up Potter Valley Road? And then up Potter Valley Road?
That's the boundary of the, that's showing the boundary of the actual HDP, of the Hillside District Plan boundary. Again, it's just not clearly shown because of overlap of lines. But it will be the same as all the other, all the other maps will be consistent.
But that's not the correct boundary. The boundary would be the Seward Highway, not the old Seward Highway.
That's correct.
Okay, so that is, that line is misplaced then? Is that correct?
Oh, oh, no. It does not include Potter Marsh. Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, the Hillside, the maps we've been dealing with did include Potter Marsh. It went along the Seward Highway. And it did include the section that appears to be pulled out on lower part of Potter Valley Road.
Uh, we'll, it does appear that we'll some do include it. We'll make sure it's consistent with the other maps. I'm not sure why that one is off, but...
Well, actually, all, Suzie, all the maps that we got recently show this, what looks to me like a new boundary compared to what was in the public hearing draft.
That might be because we've also had the change from the consultant over to our own staff. So that, that change might be just a reflection of not catching that. But we're aware of the problem and we will make sure it's corrected.
Okay, did you have a copy of the public hearing draft you could refer to?
Yeah, part of the problem is there are varying boundaries in the public hearing draft. And it's because those sources came from different consultants. And what I think we're saying is if, if we concur that in fact the boundary was intended to be at the Seward, New Seward Boundary, they will all be made that, just like on the southern boundary, we had to make that adjustment, they will, they will all have to be made to be consistent. So if, if in fact the boundary, and I actually don't know, if the boundary includes the New Seward Highway, and it sounds like it does, then we'll just make sure all those maps do, do in fact include it.
Well, how are we going to have confidence that the map that's adopted by the Assembly is the map that we think we approved?
Well, if you'd like, we could come back again and we can bring, I mean, we've, we've actually told, told you that there are maps throughout this document that we don't intend to change until we've actually gone through the Assembly. Because they've, they've been produced by consultants. And until we're confident that all the changes are made, we're not going to reproduce them all, similar to the document itself. So, but, but we will assure you that the boundaries will be consistent and accurate.
Mr. Isham?
I have a concern about that because when we make recommendations to the Assembly, and they need to be accurate based on our recommendations. Unless you guys want to go up and do a song and dance and say, "Well, don't pay attention to that line. It's in the wrong place." I mean, it would make sense to me that what goes forward to the Assembly in fact is what we approved. And if, if you've got problems with the GIS, you know, that's down here, you need to, need to get it straightened out. And I think we need to look at it perhaps next, next week. It doesn't seem like it's a big problem, but you could probably fix it in a week. And then we could go ahead and approve this thing, get it moving.
If I could, if your intent is to change the maps that you have in front of you, that's easy and we've agreed to do that. However, there are other maps in the document that we've described in text the changes that we intend to make to them. And we did not intend to redo those maps until the document is final. I mean, if, if what you're asking is to make a whole bunch of changes in the document, we've tried to describe and explain to the best degree possible the changes that we're going to make. And we're going to do that. But we don't redo a document and have a version once it leaves the commission and then pay a consultant a second time to incorporate those changes.
I think it would be better if we could at least have one map, even if it's just hand-drawn around these boundaries on a base map. So we know, or we can visually see where we believe the boundary is going to be. I don't have any confidence now. I mean, it's not that I don't trust folks. But in my line of work, I can't tell you how many times I've seen official maps for utility service areas, for instance, where the legal description does not match what's drawn on the maps. And so words don't always equal the maps, even though you think they do. Would, I don't know, maybe I missed speaking. What would the commission like to do with this?
Well, you're only asking us to approve these maps that you've included here, is that correct? That's what we're actually approving, or are these...
You're including the entire attachment, which includes some new maps. What we tried to do is separate out the maps that had some significant changes to them that we worked with the subcommittee on and so forth. So for example, other than the Potter Marsh Boundary, you'll find at the southern boundary of the map, there's a straight line basically running across Upper Potter Valley. The initial maps, some of the maps in the document, had a little square out of that. And if you refer to Attachment A in the document itself, right at the beginning, we say, "study area boundary, the southern boundary is inconsistent on maps in the Hillside District Plan. Remove the northwest quarter, Section 24, et cetera, et cetera." We tried to illustrate with the maps that we showed you the boundary that we were going to do. Now, that, I'm saying that to illustrate a point. That we then weren't going to reproduce all of the other maps in the document at this stage, but try to clarify and make it clear by what you're approving, what ultimately we'll end up with. This is a separate issue. And, and I'm, I mean, I asked Ms. Contreras to just find what the, what the boundary was. I personally don't know what the boundary is as it relates to Potter, Potter Marsh. The intent was not to change it, but it seems what happened is, is in doing so, we, you know, I don't know that it makes a great deal of difference if we have state land within our boundary. I mean, it's a separate question whether we should even have state land within the boundary of the district plan. But in fact, we decided this boundary question way back three and a half, four years ago. And that's what we went with. We're not intending to change it. I just, I just don't know the answer to the question tonight.
Mr. Isham? Mr. Waddleton?
Hi, what I, looking at Map 5.6, Attachment 7, which is the soil types map, this shows the boundary that includes Potter Marsh. And to correct the record, when, on the changes that are in question, I said that part of Lower Potter Valley Road was taken out. It's actually the lower part of Potter Creek, not, not the road that was taken out in the maps we're questioning. But on Map 5.6, it shows the New Seward Highway as the western boundary. And then it jogs to the east and, and comes around. So I would say this, Map 5.6, shows the boundary that we've typically used through the years developing this plan. And as I recall, the only change that we asked that should be done is that little quarter section to the very south would be taken out of the area.
Ms. Pies?
Yes. Madam Chair, I guess I think that we could pass other aspects of the map, but ask that at least perhaps the members of the subcommittee verify the perimeter of the Hillside District Plan one more time. We're not trying to change anything, but it should match the description of, in the text of the Hillside District Plan. We took out that quarter section along the southern boundary because it didn't match. The description, I believe, is, you know, north and east and west of Chugatch State Park. So I think that's why there's now a little dogleg of territory taken out at Potter Creek because it's part of Chugatch State Park. But I think it's our proofreading responsibility just to look at this one more time. It can be delegated perhaps to a subcommittee, just the question of the boundary.
Mr. Isham?
Madam Chair, I would just suggest that rather than changing all the maps, they have at least one map where they can say, "This is the correct boundaries," and the other ones will be brought into conformity with that. You know, pick one you may have on hand and just say, "Here are the boundaries." Because I'm not going to argue with you where the boundaries are. You know better than I do. But, but you got to be consistent and say, "This is the gospel." You know, here, this is the map.
Ms. Contreras, did you wish to add something?
Just saying, maybe pinpointing the land use plan map to be the official, if you take that path.
Unfortunately, Ms. Contreras, that land use plan map is 30 years old.
I'm, I'm talking about the one in the Hillside District.
Oh, okay. Not the official one that's currently in place today. All right. We need a motion. Ms. Pies?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to pass the Hillside District Plan final wording. This is Resolution Number 2009-047, as presented in our staff packet, but with the wording refinements or clarifications that we have discussed earlier. And with also a request that the commission, or at least the Hillside District Plan Subcommittee, take one final look to approve the perimeter boundary of the Hillside District Plan, ensuring that it matches the description of the Hillside District. And we'd like to make one more clarification based on the two pages that was put on the table in front of us tonight. And that would be just to look at the very last paragraph of that two-page handout, which staff calls to remove a bullet referencing the trailhead parking at Echo Park. And staff correctly notes that the commission did not originally approve this bullet. But staff says, "Since there is public land available to make the connection, it is a non-issue." And I would like the commission to recognize that it is an issue because we're amending the trail plan. So I'd like the, the resolution I'm making now to delegate staff to resolve the connections on the trails map before it goes to the Assembly.
Do you want to push the motion button, Ms. Pies?
For some reason, it's not showing up on my screen.
There you are now, Mr. and Mr. Waddleton, second. Thank you. Do you wish to enter some findings into the record, Ms. Pies?
Well, we've previously made findings on the substance of the motion. So I guess I would just enter the findings that none of these changes proposed tonight constitute new issues that were not discussed and voted on at our previous meetings on this issue. These changes made here are either typographical or consistency corrections, or in a couple of instances, they reflect our final revisions to language that we asked the staff to draft up and bring back to us.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pies. Mr. Waddleton?
I'd like to amend that motion to remove the discussion on coming back and looking at the map boundaries again. And replace that with a statement that the map boundaries be shown as on the land use plan map, Attachment Four. And I guess basically that's it. Then I can speak to it.
Are you amenable to that, Ms. Pies?
Yes, I am, although I don't have a copy of, not sure I have the correct dated land use plan map in front of me. So what is the date on that?
I don't have a date. I think it came with what we got most recently. But it shows the Chugatch State Park removed from the boundaries.
I have a, a map that doesn't have a designation on it.
That's it.
Maybe it's at the top.
At the very end, the bottom is where the titles are.
Oh, okay, this says zone four. Is that what you're referring to?
It should say land use plan map, public hearing draft at the bottom.
Yes.
Right. And speaking on that, these maps, I understand now, they, they match the text, which says, area generally described exclusive of Independence Park subdivision and west and north of Chugatch State Park. So that's what's achieved by these boundaries. So they are different than we had been looking at on most of the maps in the public hearing draft. But these maps do reflect the wording that was in the document. And I think that's appropriate to make the maps match the wording.
And the western boundary is the old Seward Highway? Would you agree with that change, Ms. Pies?
Yes, I do agree with that change.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment.
And I accept it too.
Well, since you proposed it, I would hope you'd accept it, Mr. Waddleton. Any further discussion on the motion? Any objection? Hearing then, that is approved. This will, as soon as the resolution is signed, then sta, and I don't know, does this resolution need to go back for a further adjustment to staff, Ms. Pies?
No, I don't think so. Madam Chair, I did want to know before we leave this issue. I am looking at the land use plan map. And in his spoken words, Mr. Waddleton said it follows the old Seward Highway boundary. But the land use plan I'm looking at does include some parcels of land that are west of the old Seward Highway.
Well, it may, but down toward the southern part, it predominantly follows the old Seward Highway.
Predominantly. I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, not the new Seward Highway. Okay, well, we can now move on to Resolution One B. And I will, that is the Walmart store. Mr. Waddleton, you pull that.
I just had a, it's fairly minor. On page two of the resolution on point four, about in the middle, it said adding pilasters to the north and west elevations. And that's actually to the north and south elevations. And that is reflected correctly in the minutes. It should be south.
Okay, so where are you proposing the change?
It's page two, point four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine lines down.
Got it.
Change west to south.
Okay, does staff have any objection with that?
No, we don't.
So a motion would be in order, oh.
Move to approve.
Where's Ms. Oshimer? You're back.
I'm back.
Okay.
And I, and I do have a comment or a question.
Okay, well, let's get a motion on the floor first.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2009-043, mending on page two, item four, change west elevations to south elevations.
Okay, and that's been seconded by Mr. Frederick. Okay, Ms. Oshimer, your question?
On item number seven, where it says, "The minimum amount to be expended on improvements as defined by staff would be $417,527 or 10% of the building permit valuation, applicable to costs of constructing exterior components of the expansion area, whichever is greater." Could you, for the record, define exterior components?
Ms. Yoshimura, I'm afraid the planner that worked on this, who has the most knowledge of this, is not present. I don't feel comfortable answering that question.
I have discussed this with staff a little bit today in a series of emails, and I am concerned because it is, whichever is greater. Exterior components is not a definition that I'm really very comfortable with. In my opinion, it refers to the skin of the building, you know, whether it's the siding or the paint or whatever, as opposed to the actual exterior construction of the building, which would include the walls. Now, I understand that, according to the interpretation of the Big Box Ordinance, that we cannot get 10% of what would normally be called the tenant improvements, which would be plumbing, electrical, sheet rock, and all that sort of thing. But because this says whichever is greater, I'm hoping for some definition of exterior.
Well, I mean, the department, I think, generally feels that it means the whole wall. So if you... Through the chair, if Commissioner Yoshimura is trying to say that exterior components should include both sides of an exterior wall, then the department would not take issue with that.
All right. Thank you. I'm satisfied with that answer, as long as it's followed through when it comes to valuing the 10%.
Okay. Well, I think I'm... Ms. Pease, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. What about you, Mr. Weddleton?
Well, I would just offer a suggestion there that you could add applicable to the costs of constructing exterior components as described in the staff report, because they did list the items that they were using in that staff report.
Okay.
Is that proper for a resolution?
Well, I think that would tie it down a little bit more.
Right. I would accept that.
Well, we need some exact words.
Through the chair, I think Mr. Weddleton has given us the wording. This is for the findings of fact, and I don't... If this is something that was already in the staff report, it'd be appropriate to place it here.
Do you want me to repeat the wording?
Yes. And where do you intend it to be?
Okay. On the item seven, page four of four.
Right.
Second to the last line.
Okay.
Add after, constructing exterior components add as described in the staff report.
As described in the staff report. Okay. And did you pick up that... You've got that language okay?
Well, that sounds terrible.
Okay.
I would actually add that after the word "area." That would make it read better.
Okay.
So it's a constructing exterior components of the expansion area as described in the staff report, comma, whichever is greater. Got it?
Mr. Frederick, do you accept that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any objection by commissioners? Hearing none. That is approved. And that resolution will have to come back in the little packet next week for me to sign.
Yes, it will. Thank you.
All right. All right. The next one is D1C, and this is the bicycle plan. And I'll just sit here and run the meeting. I won't vote on it because I didn't... I was absent that night. Mr. Weddleton, once again.
This is actually a fairly simple thing that staff dealt with by handing us a new map, Figure 10, today. And it was just an error where the town centers and major employment centers had all shifted south a mile. So the corrected version was given to us today.
Okay.
So I... Do you want a motion?
I want a motion.
Okay. Move to approve Resolution Number 2009-51 regarding the Anchorage Bicycle Plan with the correction of map, Figure 10, provided to us this evening, with the town centers correctly placed.
I need my mover and a second. Mr. Eishem, thank you. Is there any objection? Hearing none. That motion is approved. And now we're moving on to D3B of Ms. Pease.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is the site plan review for Clat Road at the C Street intersection. And my main concern here, which I sent emails regarding this issue to Mr. Tom Carosi at Parks and Rec Department, is that the pedestrian access appears to be diminished in this preferred alternative number five. The alternative number five removes a current signalized crossing, which gets people from the south side of Clat Road across the street to the current main entrance of the South Sports Park. And all of the neighborhood, or the bulk of the neighborhood users are going to be coming from the south side of Clat Road. There's quite a bit of multifamily housing, both down toward the Ocean View and John's Road area, and just directly across the street. The proposed way for neighborhood users to get across to use these ball fields and other developments is to have them go 600 to 800 yards out of their way to the east and go under a tunnel under Clat Road, and then a tunnel under C Street, and then turn around and come back. And we know that users, and probably especially young users, will not go that distance. We had a tragic occurrence that illustrates this on Lakota's a few years ago near Hanshu Middle School, in which a girl crossing from the multifamily housing chose not to go down the bike path and under a tunnel that was several hundred yards away, but instead went right across the street, and she was struck and killed. And given that Clat Road is going to be a 40 mile an hour design speed limit and a major collector, I don't know if I have that designation technically right, but it's going to carry quite a bit of traffic. I think it's very important to ensure that there be a safe pedestrian crossing directly to the main park, sports park entrance. And Mr. Carosi's response was that if, in fact, the signalized intersection was being taken out, they would like some kind of safe direct crossing, provided that traffic engineering had no direction... I mean, no objection. I assume that Mr. Carosi's email was copied to Ms. Ferguson. I didn't print it out and bring it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pease. Were you looking for an answer?
Yes. I was looking for staff to confirm that this would be a safer pedestrian connection and more in keeping with our goal of connecting neighborhoods to major park and park destinations.
Mr. Kneefel.
Madam Chairman, Ms. Pease, the issue before us is what's going to happen once the roundabout is put in, and what's going to happen with the infamous signal at Timberline and Clat Road. Based upon the discussions we've had in that, what we've decided to do is go ahead and leave the signal at Timberline and Clat on a temporary basis to see what actually happens once the roundabout is in. We do have a major concern. A signal does cause traffic backup that could go through the roundabout, which would shut the roundabout down. We want to be very careful of that. We're about 600 feet from Timberline back to C Street. So what we've agreed to do is go ahead and leave the signal in place, and we'll watch it as the roundabout is developed and see how things work. There could be a possibility later on that we could convert that into a pedestrian signal using the same equipment that's there, rather than trying to waste the capital investment we have. So that would be our approach.
Thank you. Any further questions, Ms. Pease?
Yes, I do have a further question. Alternative five talks about shifting the sports park main entrance away from Timberline. And I guess I just would want staff's comment that this is still going to be a safe alternative, and that there will be some entrance right there at the Timberline intersection. Otherwise, we're still sending users away from the main entrance down the street to go use a signal that they're not going to want to use. So will there still be some kind of entrance to the sports park at Timberline?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, there will be an access from the Timberline and Clat Road intersection to the park initially. Again, depending on what happens with the roundabout, that may change in the future. But at least we'll leave that initially with that access there, yes.
Any further questions? Not a... Ms. Pease, a motion would be in order.
I have motioned.
You motioned. Okay. And I have a second for Mr. Weddleton. Is there any objection to approval?
Madam Chair, I would just like to note that our approval would include not just the document before us, but the testimony we heard from Mr. Kneefel, that the signal will be retained, and the signal and the sports park entrance at Timberline and Clat will be retained to facilitate pedestrian crossing into the park, and will be adjusted if this causes a problem with the roundabout, but there will be a controlled crossing there for pedestrian safety.
Any further comments? Apparently not. Is there any objection? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Item 3C, Ms. Pease.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is the master plan approval of Delaney Park. And I was... Did not have time to go through it in great detail, but I do have a couple of concerns that I like to ask questions about and perhaps ask the Commission to recommend changes on. One of these concerns is the possible expansion of the Pete City Gym Building, as much as 30 feet in height, and the concern that this creates a large structure, visual focal point, and a lot more traffic on the park strip. The South Edition Community Council has asked, in a letter that was put before us, that the building be limited in its footprint height to approximate current dimensions. So I guess I'd like to hear staff's input, if any, on whether significantly larger building fits with the focus of the master plan for the design.
Through the chair, Ms. Pease. Last week, it was on December 1st, Tuesday, I sent out an email to all the commissioners, alerting them of three conditions to the master plan. And number two, and I'll read that, was modify Appendix A design standards and guidelines to reflect minimum changes to the footprint and to the height of Pete's Gym.
Through the chair, do we have a printed copy of this? Because I don't believe I saw that email. Is it on the table?
No.
If you don't have those, I can also read the two other conditions.
I'm looking at them now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I would appreciate hearing the other two conditions.
What are the other two conditions?
Number one reads redesign the Ninth Avenue entry to the park in Zone Three to minimize the visual presence of the existing restroom and its access with the Veterans Memorial. And number two, I'll read again, modify Appendix A design standards and guidelines to reflect minimum changes to the footprint and to the height of Pete's Gym. And number three reads modify the depiction of the Veterans Memorial in Zone Three to reflect the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Task Force for the redevelopment of the Anchorage Veterans Memorial.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Weddleton?
I had a handful of questions on this for staff. Hi, one thing, is there someone from Parks?
Excuse me?
Can I invite her up to speak? Is that...
If she's with the Municipal Parks Department, you may.
I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Hollis Balthorres, and I'm the Park Development and Planning Supervisor for the Parks and Recreation Department.
A couple of questions. Reading this plan, there's a real anxious tone that we need to do something really quick, and it was like to get momentum or something, and that was two years ago. So what's happened?
I think the plan began in 2006. And the first... Part of the reason it took three-plus years was that the first thing we did was take the next steps and begin the Veterans Memorial redevelopment process. So that took an additional approximately nine to 12 months. After that, it was merely a moment of time, staff time.
Okay. While you're here, there's a point here. One of the goals was department, Parks and Rec staff, in evaluating sites for acquisition, and that's the only statement in there that talks about any acquisition. Is this... Is it blanking here?
Acquisitions to the park, you mean. Throughout the process, we discussed the potential of... There's land on the very west end of the park. I believe it's a home stud property, this... And we talked about that as potential acquisition between the park, basically, and the coastal trail. Is it Stutz, the Stutz property?
Is that mentioned, discussed in the report?
I don't think we identified it specifically, but we left that term in there so that if it did arise, we would have the ability to acquire land adjacent to Delaney Park.
It might be because this is a site plan review, but typically in a plan like this, we would get a stack of the public comments on this. And I would guess, based on the one that we got, there was some controversy. Didn't this come out as there are a lot of changes are going to be made, and then it's been toned down?
That's correct.
Can you give us the history to show me that we're in the right direction with this?
And I think that's part of the reason it took so long, beginning in 2006. It got to a certain point. Things got contentious, so we backed up a little bit and started over. So I do have large files of lots of public comment received. If you'd like to read through that, but I think what you have in front of you is a combination of all the public comments that we've received.
Okay. Good.
I think it's a good consensus.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, this is also from Ms. Balthorres. We had one comment put before us from...
We had one comment put before us from Ms. Gloria Manny with requests to have a more public approval process for future memorials. And I wondered, since I didn't have a chance, I just saw this comment tonight, where in the document the approval process for new memorials is provided, given that there are a number of memorial sites identified, there should probably be a very thoughtful process for coordinating and reviewing design of memorials.
Included in the master plan, and it's still labeled draft in the master plan, but basically after the cost estimate, there's a draft memorial policy. And I believe what Ms. Manny is recommending is that another level of review take place. Right now, it recommends review that if a new memorial is proposed, the director reviews it, the Parks and Recreation Commission reviews it, there'll probably be a separate community advisory group established, the art committee would review it, the public art committee. And what Gloria is recommending, I think, is an additional layer of review by the Blue Ribbon Task Force that was created for the Veterans Memorial improvements. So it would just be another level. So there's a draft memorial policy and policy is implemented by the director. And then the master plan itself identifies in those red dotted areas in the maps where additional memorial development would be appropriate within the park. So through the process, we felt that that red dashed line is an additional layer of protection for the lawn grassy for the park.
Okay. Ms. Oshimura. Your microphone, please.
Thank you, through the chair. Perhaps I missed this, but what is the source of funding for this master plan? Is there a source of funding available? Where would it come from?
For the improvements, yeah. There's -- currently, we don't have any remaining funds for Delaney Park. It would have to be a combination of public-private dollars, either through municipal bonds or private contributions.
Is there any plan for a bond for these improvements?
Not in the near future.
What was the cost of the master plan?
We did the master plan in-house with some graphic support from consultants. The Veterans Memorial redevelopment, that probably cost us around $40,000 by itself. We did use our consultant's support for that one.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Weddleton?
Actually, while you're there, one -- another question. In this plan, there's a number of sketches that show the parallel streets.
Uh huh.
Is that relevant to this or are we only looking at parkland?
The Delaney Park master plan went as so far to try to impact what Ninth Avenue, the character of Ninth Avenue adjacent to the park. So I would say those sketches are not appropriate for the lands inside the park, but it was a liberal depiction, I would say, of what parks could influence.
Might -- but it jumped out to me is in some cases, they talked about bike lanes on Ninth, for example, and then the picture showed a bike lane only on one side. And these are -- but maybe it doesn't matter because you're just suggesting these things could happen and you really don't have any control.
It was suggestive, yeah. And additionally, the reason we suggested runs because the width of the right of it was a lot big.
Good if you're only going west. Okay, thanks.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. You mentioned a number of groups that have been involved with this. Have these groups conducted public hearings where the public have been able to come in, have their input?
Beginning in 2006, there was a two-day public workshop initiated to the Delaney Park master plan. And the community advisory group for the Delaney Park master plan had seven meetings, three subcommittee meetings. There was a public open house, over 60 attendants at that meeting, yeah, for the public open house. There were many joint work sessions that the public was attending along the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Veterans Memorial redevelopment process had its own public process outside of that. I believe there were over five Blue Ribbon Task Force meetings, there were two public open houses, there was public meetings at the Veterans and Military Affairs Commission as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission. So it was pretty extensive.
Okay. Was there any outreach to user groups?
User groups, yes. We had extensive involvement from softball players. And that moved on to an organized user group.
I was just thinking it would have been a wonderful opportunity for schoolchildren to get involved and offer suggestions. They're going to be the taxpayers that are supporting this in the future.
Early in 2006, when we had the public workshop Run Mile Project for Public Spaces, schoolchildren were involved in that.
That's wonderful.
So early, yes.
That's great. Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions? Ms. Pease?
Yes, I'd just like to follow up on my earlier point. I've looked now more closely at the draft memorial policy and it struck me that there is a difference in what the member of the public has proposed and what's proposed in the draft policy. Mainly that there doesn't call, there's no call for members on that committee from the surrounding area. And it seems to me, given the -- well, it just seems to me, although it's a city wild park, that respecting or having some input from the people who live closest to it is important. How would the Parks and Rec staff feel about including members from the neighboring community councils, specifying that members from the community councils be a part of this memorial advisory committee? I think that would be appropriate. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't look like there are any more questions for you, so we're going to let you sit down. Thank you for coming out this evening. Well, a motion would be in order. Mr. -- Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Weddleton. Ms. Pease?
Ma'am Chair, I move for approval of the case 2009-61, the Delaney Park master plan with the staff's recommended changes, including the three changes that Ms. Ferguson drew our attention to regarding the building limita -- the size limitations on Pete's Gym and the entry. There were three. Don't have them right in front of me. In addition, I propose a change to the Denali Park draft memorial approval policy, which is on page five in the appendix, so that the memorial advisory committee will include at least three members nominated by the adjoining community councils, which are South Edition Downtown, and I'm not sure if there's another one. But these would be nominated by those councils with the intent that there will be better public involvement and representation of neighborhood concerns or interests on that memorial advisory committee.
I think fair views the other community council that whose boundaries, but on the east end.
Thank you.
Mr. Weddleton?
I'd like to add a couple other conditions. One would be that references to the downtown comprehensive plan as not being adopted be corrected so that throughout it recognizes that that plan has been adopted. Plus, throughout the document, there's occasional use of the phrase bike route lanes, and that should be changed to bike lanes. And a small edit, page 48, fourth paragraph, line nine, change the last word from "be" to "by."
Okay. Do you have any objection to accepting those changes, Ms. Pease?
No. No objection.
Anything further from commissioners? Is there any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Do you have further discussion?
You want some findings?
That would be nice.
Okay, well, I'll bring out the -- regarding this plan, reading the plan with assurances from Ms. Spath Torres, this plan is a result of a sometimes contentious process but results in a plan that found a common ground. I'd also recognize that it does reflect Parks and Rec Commission's approval in August of '07.
Is there any objection, Ms. Pease?
I just wanted to reflect, Mr. Weddleton covered most of it, I just did want to also include in the record that the South Edition Community Council has been actively involved and has supported this version of the master plan.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Moving on to number five. Now we have 5A, Mr. Weddleton. And I do want to point out that we have the consultant, I think, that's working on this available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Mr. Adams. So you may proceed.
Okay, I'm quickly reviewing the notes. I had sent an email to staff that they covered a few, most of my points. I guess, I guess, um, I've got a question for Mr. Adams.
Ma'am Chair, Mr. Weddleton? My name is Drean Adams. I'm a land design nurse. I'm a consultant to project management engineering. And we do have engineers to provide support if necessary, but I'm a landscape architect.
All right, just a few, a general question. Staff answered quite a number for me earlier to my satisfaction. Now, Raspberry Road, Phase 1, would this look essentially like that?
Ma'am Chair, Mr. Weddleton, with the exception in particular, I think it would be helpful if I provided a little background that's very germane to the issue, specifically with staff recommendations in particular. First of all, one thing to understand is that the key aspect of this is that we're trying to align two intersections that are high-volume intersections. And so with respect to that, the only way to accomplish that is by purchasing property. There's only one half of a, basically a usable right of way available, and there is no right of way on the Wells Fargo property to the south. As a result, we have to purchase that property, and that's highly problematic. First of all, it's very expensive to acquire that much right of way. But also, in doing so, it provides a significant challenge to the Wells Fargo property to allow them to meet adequate parking. And the approach that we provided is one that recognizes that because, among other things, there's a grandfathered parking lot. There is no landscaping in that parking lot. And so our solution tried to provide for a piece of trail that to the greatest degree possible met the public need while recognizing that the only way to achieving any landscaping at all was probably by incorporating that into the project the best we could, which meant placing that trail adjacent to the back of curb. And in doing so, then providing landscaping behind that. Our theory was in doing that, that because this is number one, a very short piece, it's only 750 feet long. It's also, two, very well-controlled intersections, signaled intersections. Raspberry Road, in essence, ends at C Street, certainly provides access to a business on the other side, but for all practical purposes, traffic is moving much slower than it would in most minor arterios in this piece. Most of this traffic is turning traffic, so again, the traffic speeds are reduced. So it's not typical of most minor arterios for which those standards apply. Recognizing that, we determined that probably the best way of achieving the larger grid, including meeting our landscape requirements, was then to move that trail to the back of curb and provide that landscaping that we felt was important on a highly visible public right of way.
Okay, so the department recommendation, number four, to provide an eight-foot wide pathway separated from the curb by seven foot on the south side of the road. You, your position is that that's not?
We would recommend, through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, we would recommend that we not adhere to that number four, that we feel that a greater public grid is met by providing a space for landscaping. Among other things, there is a bike lane in the roadway, and so it does provide snow storage capability as well as protecting users that are using that bike path that's against that curb from a splashback, which is also problematic for cyclists or pedestrians that are using that trail. So we ask that that one through three is fine. We would prefer that number four be dropped.
So if that weren't dropped, how much more right of way would you need?
Well, in essence, we'd need probably another seven feet or so, which is highly problematic.
Is it hard because of the money?
Plus the problem that we're pinching that business owner from achieving necessary parking. But also, it's a significant cost increase for the project, certainly.
Okay, so I asked staff that, and their conclusion was that it could be done with one or two feet of additional right of way.
Well, that's not much space for root growth, certainly. Tree needs, you know, if you go to the landscape standards, the sign criteria manual, we recommend a minimal seven feet, preferably 12 feet, probably both two feet. Maybe you could get a shrub in there or something along those lines, but that's pretty minimal in your -- that's a pretty minimal planting strip, I would say, just as a landscape, providing enough rooting zone. Also, you've got a lot of asphalt and it's not getting much water and this is not going to be irrigated.
And now, this has a center turn lane in this distance. Is that correct?
Well, yes, it, you know, I can put this up on the other if you'd like, but in essence, there is a center turn lane, but again, these are really close intersections and that center turn lane is much more than a typical center turn lane that allows access to driveways. It's also providing stacking capability to allow those turns because of the high volumes that this sometimes experiences.
Anything, is it 14 feet wide?
Different for the engineer, 14 feet. I'm getting a yes on that.
So a regular lane is 10 to 12 feet wide and the turn lane's 14. Could you take a couple feet off of that and then?
One of the problems with this particular is this is one of the Enkridge's only actually working industrial areas. We've got a lot of volumes of trucks that are going through this that make, going to a 12 feet. this that make, going to a 12 feet, which is probably oftentimes acceptable in residential is problematic in this industrial area.
Okay, let's, for me on that, thank you.
Yes. It's your turn.
Madam Chair, I'm Laurie Skankie, the Non-Motorized Transportation Coordinator. I'm also a landscape architect, but I feel that in this situation, we really need to prevail on the function of what we are trying to create in a more walkable space. Otherwise, right now, what Mr. Adams is suggesting or proposing is actually, the municipality and the public is taking the brunt of providing the landscaping for this property owner, sort of like Costco on Diamond and C where, you know, the cars are right at the fence. I think until this property comes in for some kind of redevelopment and we could enforce some landscaping on their property, I think a compromise might be to lose the landscaping in this area and at least provide a separated path or at least all paving in there, because we know it's difficult to try and grow any plants next to the road. But as Mr. Adams has noted, there's a lot of very large trucks through here, and so this at least would give a little more room for people using the pathway and not have to try and grow some plants in there and just have a better buffer. So we'd end up with a good ped facility. I think it would not be appropriate to pursue buying more right-of-way in this case. Does that make sense?
Ms. Dean?
Through the chair. I drive an intersection twice a day, and it's pretty tough. There's a lot of big trucks that drive through that intersection. The question in my mind is, though, is Dowling's going to get extended and connected to Raspberry, and after that point, those intersections will become very low-use intersections comparatively to what they are right now. When will the Dowling extension be finished and be usable when it connects to Raspberry? Do you have a date for that?
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, I believe it's 2012 or so. They're still working on the design of that, so it's going to be a few years.
So through the chair, then, how many, how long before this project is drivable? Is this a next year location of utilities, and then 2011 is construction?
Through the chair, I'm looking at the staff here. I believe it's 2011 to be driven on.
So if I understand this right, we're going to go ahead, we're going to spend all this money, we're going to go ahead and do this intersection again, and we're going to make this road all nice and big, and then the very next year, Dowling's going to be finished and take away most of the use of, most of the traffic for that road. Am I understanding that, Jane, correctly?
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, the design of the road, at least in part, has to do with the classification on the Official Streets and Highways Plan, and this is classified, I believe, as a commercial minor arterial, justifying certain, you know, the design, the design that was put into this was driven, I think, at least partly by the OS and HP.
Okay. Mr. Rettleton?
Well, I'm actually a little confused after Ms. Skankie's comment there. So you would prefer landscaping near the road than a path outside, further away from the road, but you're saying that can be done without additional right-of-way?
Through the chair, Mr. Rettleton, I believe that there would be room to do that, although from what Mr. Adams is saying, there's only, there's not quite enough room, so we might have to just pave it all and forget the landscaping. It's only one block long. Am I correct, Mr. Adams?
Through the chair, Ms. Skankie, we could, we can get a six or seven-foot strip there. It's just, it's very difficult to get anything to grow there. Just, we've had bad luck, and the design criterion manual specifically says don't even try, as a matter of fact.
Mr. Rettleton?
Okay, so if I'm clear, what you're suggesting is we trade a separated trail for the landscaping, skip the landscaping to gain a separated trail. That would be your preference?
Through the chair, Mr. Rettleton, yes, that's what I'm proposing. Mr. Adams?
May I, Chair Jones, Mr. Rettleton, one thing that may be considered as an approach that the state uses on occasion, and that is to provide what's called a shy space of a foot or two of textured pavement of one type or another, and then provide that trail, say, an eight-foot trail. So in that shy space, basically gives a place to catch that dirt and gravel and protect the cyclist, and then that would leave a little space, five or six feet, that we could probably get some plantings. One thing also I would add is, this is tracking on a new approach that was in agreement, that's been worked out by planning staff in concert with the state with respect to process. And what that allows is that this commission will see this project twice, and then it will go to the Urban Design Commission one time, which is a change from the past. So what I would suggest is that you may want to try to fashion an approval that would allow some flexibility, including perhaps the approach that I just suggested, so that when you see it again, which will be at the end of the design study report about a 35 percent stage, we will not have lost a lot of time with respect to the design, but you get kind of a baby-step approach for the approval process, and that then allows a final agreed-to structural plan with respect to exactly where everything is, that will go to the Urban Design Commission.
Okay. I'm going to acknowledge Mr. McLaughlin first. Mr. Rettleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. After listening to testimony by the petitioner, the petitioner's representative, and the non-motorized transportation coordinator, I would like to propose amending condition number four of the Department of Recommendations. The way it's worded now, it's very rigid, and that was based on, you know, policy codified in the Area-Wide Trails Plan. But we could, in this instance, because of the reasons that the petitioner cited, we could make it a little bit more flexible and allow them to take into account some of these special circumstances. So if, on page two of the packet, if we were to draw a line through the words "by seven foot" and replace them with "with available right-of-way", so draw a line through "by seven foot" and replace it with "with available right-of-way", so it would state, "provide an eight-foot wide pathway separated from the curb with available right-of-way on the south side of the road in accordance with the Area-Wide Trails Plan." That might be a good compromise. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Pease?
Just to follow up on that, what would be, maybe the petitioner can say, what would the available right-of-way vary between? What would be the range? And my question is, in lieu of the fact that you don't want to have a facility that radically changes alongside the road, curbside for very much of the way?
Madam Chair, Ms. Pease, what's available is, is 40 feet. That's what we have to work with, with what is at one end, four lanes of traffic because there's three turn lanes plus one way going the other direction, and then that switches to three lanes at the other end. So it varies is a complicated answer. But with respect to what I believe I heard staff say, that alternative that I was proposing, sounds like that might be an acceptable approach. And I'm seeing a nodding at the front on it. Thank you. Does that answer your question, Ms. Pease?
Almost. This said a minimum of seven feet. Will there be much of the roadway in which the right-of-way would only allow two feet, three feet?
Well, we, through the chair, Ms. Pease, what I think we can do is look at combinations that provide that separation, plus a shy distance, again, is what's called in the design criterion manual in the trails documents from the back of curb, and then see if we can still provide some plantings in that space behind, and maybe we can get five feet or six feet or something like that. We'll play with those alternatives.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Isham?
Yes, Mr. Adams. Basically, is this conceptual design diagram what you're working with that includes that term "six-foot decorative chain link fence"? Is that sort of part of the plan, too?
Through the chair, Mr. Isham, that matches fence that's on the west side of Arctic Boulevard also. So getting back to Mr. Rettleton's initial comment, that same type fence, which is, it's basically a chain link wooden framing that makes it a little aesthetic, more aesthetically pleasing. It will continue with theme.
I see chain link and decorative in the same sentence. I consider that almost mutually exclusive, but.
It's, we'll turn it retro.
There you ask, Mr. Isham. Well, any further questions for Mr. Adams? Mr. Rettleton, last time?
Sorry. Well, I just wanted to get some of the wording here. If we changed for, as staff recommended, but you also had some wording that said, "if landscaping is not possible, then some kind of paving." You had a phrase?
Through the chair, Mr. Rettleton, I think what staff proposed allows that. And I think what you want to say is provide an eight-foot pathway separate curb as available within the right-of-way on the south side of the road in accordance with the Area-Wide Trails Plan. And I know what they're trying to achieve there. They're trying to get separation, but we're also trying to reach that larger public good, providing some landscape to the extent possible behind the trail, and we'll do what we can to meet that. And again, this is our initial time. You'll see us. Next time, we'll try to demonstrate that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Ms. Pease, is this another question?
No, I just had some proposed wording to capture Mr. Adams' intent, and that would be on condition four.
Well, okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
I was going to try it out with Mr. Adams.
Oh, you were going to try it out with Mr. Adams. You didn't articulate that, or I didn't understand it.
I'm getting my FaceTime.
It would be, just a descriptive clause that says, "with vegetative," at the end of that condition, comma, "with vegetative landscaping to be provided in back of a hardened shy space at the curb where space allows."
Through the chair, no, Ms. Pease. We aren't talking about providing a strip and then landscaping a trail. What we're talking about is a textured pavement, a trail. This is very common in state sidewalks. And then behind that trail, then the landscaping.
In whatever space is available.
In the space that's available, exactly.
And there may be none. It may just be that fence that Mr. Adams was referring to. Is that correct?
Correct, but we'll see if we can't.
You'll see if you can. But the objective is to have a safe, adequate trail for pedestrian safety.
Okay, then, never mind my wording. I think Mr. Adams explained it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I'm ready. Mr. Rettleton?
Here, regarding case 2009-157, Public Facility Concept Report Review for Raspberry Road Improvements, Phase Two, I move to approve with the conditions stated by staff on page two, with condition number four modified to read, "provide an eight-foot wide pathway separated from the curb with available right-of-way on the south side of the road in accordance with the Area-Wide Trails Plan."
And that's been seconded by Ms. Pease. Do you wish to just speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think this, well, just regarding, it's a nice list of public facility standards, meeting comp plan policies on page one of the petitioner's report, and those are policies 26, 30, 32, 33, 36, and 37. Also listed in the petitioner's packet is policy 81 regarding snow removal, and I specifically do not include that as an appropriate policy met by this plan, or by this road project. I'd also note that the Tako Campbell Community Council approved this project as presented.
Anything further? I will just note for the record that, like Ms. Dean, I travel on C Street regularly. I don't travel on Raspberry, but I do travel on C Street. And that's a heavy industrial area through there. And I think that having concern for any pedestrians that walk in that vicinity, it has to be a top priority, particularly with the large trucks that come through the area. And to them, time is money, and they're often going rather quickly. So I'm okay with, particularly with having the separated pathway from the road. So we'll be voting in favor of this. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none? Good night, Mr. Adams. It's always good to see you. All right, let's, excuse me?
Sorry, I gave her the list of the findings to help her.
Okay. I thought you were sneaking behind me here.
Trying to help.
Up to no good. Let's see. Well, the next, I think we want, now is a good time for us to take a very short break, and then we'll do case G1. Don't we have? D5B? Oh, we've got one more, D5B. We can do that. All right, that's Mr. Rettleton's. Mr. Rettleton?
I'm searching for my packet here. Was that the?
Unified Work Program. And I understand that was a handout that somebody has. Yes. Yes, please.
I had a number of comments that I emailed. Should I begin?
Well, you can, but before you get too far into it, staff has a handout that I understand has some changes. Is that correct, Mr. Lyon?
There aren't some changes. They're very minor, editorial, the most important.
Okay, we may want to hear what staff's changes are before we hear what your suggestions are. Because we may, you have changes to "I knew that." Okay, who's going, Mr. Lyon, you may proceed.
Madam Chair, in between the time that I provided you folks with the original document that you had in your packet, and now, the AMET's Technical Advisory Committee met and made some minor changes to this. Again, most of them have to do with some minor changes to this, again, most of them have to do with 2007 being changed to 2008 and just really minor editorial changes. The only real, excuse me, substantive change was, in previous years, well, let me backtrack just a bit. This is, this deals with the federal planning funds that come into the city to do transportation planning. These are not capital funds. These are not building road projects or trail projects or paying for buses necessarily. These are planning funds, and these are the funds that are utilized by the transportation planning staff in their work, and just like all of the federal transportation funds that come into the city, there's a required local match to show some ownership. Previously, we have shown that match has been reflected in the traffic calming program that's administered by the traffic department. As you probably know, there is not, scheduled in the 2010 municipal budget, a traffic calming program, so we can't reflect the match there. It's always been an in-kind match. We are instead going to reflect the match in the traffic data counts, the traffic counts, the daily traffic counts on the different streets around the city. So it's just a reflection of, instead of showing the match in the, in the traffic calming program, it's over in the data collection group. So that's pretty much the only substantive change that you'll find in the different, in the two different documents, besides a bunch of dates and things of that nature.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Lyon? Mr. Whedleton?
Just in the email that I sent today, maybe it was the sixth, was it yesterday? Did you, how many, did you go through these changes and make them in the, can you, do you want to run through my, do you have my email in front of you?
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Whedleton, I made all of the changes that you suggested. They were, again, mostly editorial. If you'd like, I can go through each one. You want me to highlight those for the committee, or, they're pretty minor. Substantive, but minor. They're good, good suggestions.
How many do you have?
Well, it was probably seven or eight, and I guess the question on this is, we could go through, I could accept the assurances that they were made, and that would be fine, and I'm willing to do that, but if there's other comments, then, understanding too, since we're presented with a new document here, we could also postpone this till next week.
Yes, we could.
That's an alternative, so.
What's the desire of the commission? Make the changes and bring it back?
Apparently, the changes were made and was in front of us. It would just be, we haven't had a chance to.
Review it.
Review it.
Yes.
Incorporates my changes and other changes.
So if we wanted on next week's agenda, we need to postpone it. Make a decision, someone.
Okay, regarding...
I'll make the decision.
Okay. Let me make the motion. I'd move regarding the 2010, 2011 Unified Planning Work Program to postpone until our meeting on 12/14.
Under unfinished business? Okay, and it's been seconded by Mr. Eishem. Is there any objection? Apparently, we'll deal with this next Monday. So everybody save it. Do not throw it away. Now, we will take a short break and come back and be on case G1, Lumen Design Build, this case. Okay, I will call the meeting back to order, and as soon as the case shows up on my screen, there it is. We are now at the public hearing portion of our agenda, and the next item before us is case number 2009-126. The petitioner is Lumen Design Build LLC. Their request is to rezone some property from PLI to R3. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to point the commission to one late public comment that was handed out this evening. No other public comments have been received. This is a request to rezone an approximately seven-acre tract of land from PLI to R3. A zoning map can be found on page 13 of the packet. An aerial map is on page 14. The department finds that the standard is met for conformance to the comprehensive plan. The 1982 generalized land use plan identifies the petition site as parks and open space. However, this property is privately owned and is not likely to ever become parkland. The Anchorage 2020 Land Use Policy Map identifies the area near the intersection of Abbott Road and the Lake Otis Parkway as a town center. The petition site is located within a quarter mile of that intersection. Town centers are intended to include a mix of retail, shopping, and services, public facilities, and medium-to-high-density residential developments. The Lake Otis Parkway, which abuts the west boundary of the site, is designated as a transit-supportive development corridor. Most of the town centers are linked to one or more major employment centers by transit-supportive development corridors. These corridors represent optimal locations for more intensive commercial and residential land patterns that will support and encourage higher levels of transit service. These corridors are not intended to represent a transit route map, but illustrate where new medium-to-high-density housing development will occur. The petition site is bordered by R3 SL and B3 SL to the west, PLI to the north and south, and PLIP to the east. Rezoning to R3 is compatible with the adjacent districts because it allows medium-to-high-density residential development, which also supports a town center. The department finds that the standard is met for land development patterns in the area. The property is surrounded by a church to the north, a park to the west, an elementary school to the south, and a multifamily residential neighborhood to the west. The petitioner conducted a traffic impact analysis, which was reviewed and approved by the municipal traffic engineer. The traffic engineer and the fire department have no concerns about the proposed rezone. There are two driveways from the site to the Lake Otis Parkway, and the proposed rezone to R3 will not create a significant traffic burden. The official streets and highways plan identifies this section of the Lake Otis Parkway as a Class II minor arterial. The Lake Otis Parkway has separated paved multi-use pathways on both sides. The department finds that the effect of the rezoning would bring the petition site into conformance with the Anchorage 2020 Land Use Policy Map, which identifies the area as a town center. The proposed rezone to an R3 district is more appropriate for this location than the existing PLI district because it would not, because it would allow residential development that supports the town center. PLI does not do that. The department recommends three special limitations be placed on the rezone. First, a minimum of 12 dwelling units per acre should be required on a site in any parcel created by subdivision. The R3 does not require a minimum DUA, and medium density is considered to be 12 DUA or greater. Second, it is important to require pedestrian connectivity across the site from east to west and to the Lake Otis Parkway, I'm sorry, from east to west to the Lake Otis Parkway and south to the Spring Hill Elementary School. Third, the buildings abutting the Lake Otis Parkway should face the street, and all parking should be located in the rear of the buildings. The department recommends approval of the rezone to R3, subject to special limitations A, B, and C, on page 10 of your packet. The department has prepared a draft assembly ordinance, which is on pages 11 and 12 of your packet. I would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Frederick.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin, 12 DUA is a, a minimum 12 DUA is a, is an aspect of the B3 zoning, and I'm curious why, why we don't, why we aren't looking at B3 as the proposed rezone here if minimum 12 DUA is your desire.
The E3 district also allows commercial uses, a wide range of commercial uses, and the department felt that this is an appropriate location for residential, but not commercial.
No, there's B3 right across the street.
That's correct.
Kind of a toss-up. There's R3 across the street. There's B3 across the street.
That's correct. The department made a decision that, that between this PLI district to the north and the school to the south, and across the Lake Otis Parkway is B3 and R3, that this was appropriate location for residential, but not, not commercial.
No kind of commercial, low-impact, or otherwise?
That's correct.
Ms. Yoshimura.
Um, through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin, do you know if the petitioner has any objection to the 12 dwelling units per acre?
I've spoken with the petitioner. They have no objection.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Hearing none at this time. I will open the public hearing. Petitioner, including all of its representatives, are allowed 10 minutes for its presentation. You, the petitioner is allowed to reserve a portion of those 10 minutes for rebuttal time. Individuals speaking on behalf of a group are allowed five minutes, and people speaking just on their own behalf are allowed three minutes, and you, folks are only allowed to testify one time. So having made that announcement, I will invite the petitioner or its representative to come I will give you a minute here to get set up.
I'm chair and commissioners. My name is Ron Bateman. I'm an architect in Anchorage and one of several partners in Lumen Design Build. With me is Sean Wu, who is, has a long background in development in Anchorage, and Lee is sitting back there. He has a long history of low-income, tight projects, that are need-based. I think it's correct to say that Francis has done a good job of summing up our position. We agree with his report entirely, and don't have any objection to anything in there. I think the important thing about this project, from our perspective, is that it's a slightly different approach to development in Anchorage. It tries to increase density and at the same time increase open space, which we do by building the townhouse style, which is a garage on the first floor, living levels and bedrooms, and then we use the roof as a yard space, and the net result is that we can get more people on less land and create corridors for sunlight, for view, for activity, and we can improve, we think, the quality of life. This idea is an extension of an existing project that we've done over on Monmouth Boulevard called Aurora Square, and the reaction of the public has been surprisingly positive. We are able to presell all the units in all the phases before we start construction, and our prices are not near the bottom, but they're not near the top either. We're shooting for high-quality, medium-priced housing. The important thing about this project also from a sort of a, from a production point of view is that this is a private development. We're not asking the city to maintain the roads. We're not asking AWU to maintain the sewers. We are in the process, or would be, entering into a subdivision agreement with PMNE, although it's a private project, and they would supervise, then AWU would supervise the construction of utilities, and PMNE would supervise the construction of roads, but the cost of maintenance would all be borne by a condominium association which owns this entire site. The idea for the edge of the road, it's sort of classic good-city planning, which is you put the parking behind the buildings, you hold the edge of the street, and that produces a sort of sound barrier for residents behind and pushes better experience along the street. If you look quickly, I think I'm, we wanted to reserve some time, so I shouldn't go too long, but quickly, some of the major ideas of the site plan are that, you can see the open space. You can see that we've also prepared an axial view as you come in the project. That brings you visually all the way back to the back of the project and allows residents to circulate through the site. These two units here are senior housing projects that are, Alaska Housing is interested in helping to promote, and I think that the thought, I'll shut it.
Okay, you have six minutes left of rebuttal time. Are there questions from the commission? I have a whole laundry, big list of folks. I'm going to acknowledge Mr. McLaughlin first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair, Mr. Frederick. I thought of a better response to your question. I apologize. I've been told by the people in physical planning, long-range planning, another division of the planning department, that 12 dwelling units per acre is really the minimum that is needed in order to support public transit. That's where that number comes from, not, not really from the B3 district regulations. However, that is the minimum dwelling units per acre listed in the B3, as you've, as you've stated. Also, you asked why have commercial, why not rezone to B3 in this location, and I think that at least part of the reason was, the department felt that commercial development should not cross the Lake Otis Parkway. There's no commercial development east of the Lake Otis Parkway in this part of this subarea of town. The department didn't want to support that without a town center plan, which this area does not have. That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Yoshimura. Would you like to come forward again, sir, Mr. Bateman?
I'll try.
Is your microphone on, Ms. Yoshimura?
It is now, Madam Chairman. Thank you. All right. First of all, Mr. Bateman, I want to commend you. I think I've spent quite a bit of time looking at this site plan, and I find it to be very attractive. I particularly appreciate the fact that from the entrance, you can look all the way through the development, through a park, over to the other side, and so I think it's a very, very attractive site plan, and I appreciate it very much. I have just a couple of questions. As you know, right now, if this is one tract of property, there is no need for a public site plan review. The only way that this, this development can become known to the surrounding neighborhood is if it has a public site plan review, or if you plan to go to the plating board to track out and make lots out of this one tract. So can you tell me if that is your plan, to track out lots and go to the plating board? If not, I am going to recommend to the commission that we have a public site plan review so that the neighborhood has an opportunity to give input into your development.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
We could develop the whole thing as a condominium, but for financing purposes, it would be better... better for the senior housing pieces to separate those out. So I think what we would probably want to do is probably short plot or somehow plot out those two senior housing projects, but the remainder of the property would, would not be separated, platted out at all.
Right. Do you have an objection to a public site plan review so that the neighborhood can have impact into, regarding your development?
Well, what that does to us is it's a timing issue. And we started basically this process in May of this year. And if we have to go back for another public review, it means we would miss the building season this summer, and which would threaten the project.
You said another public review. What public review have you had so far?
Well, I'm just talking about this meeting and we've been working with staff.
Through the Chair, I think that the petitioner is trying to say that after the commission acts today, then it will be scheduled for a public hearing in front of the Assembly some months from now. And after they hear, and if they were to approve the rezone, only after that approval could the applicant then apply for a site plan review. And that's a minimum forty-five day process before it comes back to you to be seen. So we're adding two more months from the date of the Assembly action, some months from now. That may be that you wouldn't see this project for site plan review until the middle of summer.
Is there no way to speed up this process? I mean, this is a significant development in southeast Anchorage, and I think it's a very positive addition. But I also believe that the neighborhood deserves to have input on a project of this size, which has a minimum of fifty-eight townhomes, plus, as I understand it, senior, potential senior or low income housing. So this is a significant development, especially at this density. So is there any way that we can speed up this process so that it doesn't have a negative financial impact on, on this development?
Through the Chair, Ms. Yoshimura, I'm afraid not. An administrative site plan review would not be seen by you until the rezone was approved by the, the Assembly.
Let's, we'll discuss this after we conclude the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have some remedies.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question? I'm Chair.
Yes.
Is this not a public hearing?
This is a public hearing, but the application did not include a request for a site plan review. It was just for a rezoning.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Frederick.
Oh, for the petitioner? Through the Chair, Mr. Bateman, have, have you been to the relevant community council with this project?
We have not been to a meeting, no.
Have you spoken to them?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Isham.
Yeah, Mr. Bateman, I assume that, that this is church property right now?
Right.
It's not on the tax rolls?
Right.
Now, when the rezoning occurs and you go into construction and sell these places or whatever you do with condominiums, it will move on to the tax rolls at that time?
Yeah, it would move on to the tax roll as soon as we complete the purchase from the church. Whether we build, you know, all of them are immediately are part of them.
Okay, so, so basically the rezoning then removes it from control of the church?
Right.
Okay.
Well, no, the purchase, the purchase, the completion of the purchase agreement puts it on the tax roll.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin, did you still have additional comments?
No, Madam Chair, sorry.
Okay. Any further questions of the petitioners from commission, the commission? Apparently not. Is there anyone else that would like to testify in this matter? Oh, Ms. Pease, you're not, you gotta be quick. Is this a question for the petitioner?
Yes, it is. It's a quick question.
Mr. Bateman, would you come forward, please?
Page thirty-seven of the applicant's proposal says that the center portion will be provided for residence, residences in combination with home office use.
Right.
Is that simply anticipated to be the in-home businesses that are allowed by right in the residential district? Or something's different?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a reference to the site plan and how it's configured so that you could enter from more than one side and have a sort of dignified home office space, or actually physically separated from the main part of the house.
I see, thank you.
Okay. Who would like to come forward and be the first person to testify? Yes, sir.
Madam Chair Commissioners, Luke Benjamin from Abbott Luke Church. Thanks for this time to speak to you all. Thanks for your public service. Some of you know that we've had some different ideas about this property over the last few years. And speaking for the church, we're really excited about this one, which we think is the one we're happy about. We mean, we think the people are good, doing, they've shown ability to pull out good projects like this already. I've lived in this scheme to console myself for fifty years. My family's lived there, worked there, all these fifty years. They're happy to have them as neighbors in our community where I still live. And regards to the community council, I'm a member of that community council, they use our church building actually for their meetings. And at least twice over the last three years, we've had meetings with them about this kind of project. And they've been unanimous in their support for the replat that we did a little while ago, and for housing developments like this one we're interviewing tonight, just for what it's worth, to answer that question. So we thank you for your consideration. Ask you please grant the request to the petitioner. Happy to answer questions if you have any for us.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Frederick has a question.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Mr. Benjamin, nice to see you.
You too.
So just to be clear, the community council's aware that this is planned for what we'd call moderate, moderate density?
Yes. I don't know if they've heard the specific design from the movement, but when I've been there talking to them about this, it's been about
Talking in general about
Lots of housing, senior housing, low income housing, and so in terms just like that. And they're being unanimous in their actual resolutions about this whole idea.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add to what a member of the public has just stated, this has been a, a long process. The, the church has engaged the, the planning department. Their surrogates have, have interacted with the planning department and coordinated with us about what sort of things would be acceptable or, or encouraged in terms of long-term planning. The last recorded plat was in July of, July twenty-eighth of two thousand eight. So just last year was when these tracts were created. It was a public hearing in front of the plating board. And that, there was already an idea of what, what kind of development would go there. That's what drove the plat. So there was a discussion of what sort of development would be, they had to have an idea of what was going to be built there prior to the plat in order to design the, define the lot boundaries when they subdivided. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yoshimura.
Um, I, um, thank you, Mr. Benjamin, for your testimony. I just have a couple of questions. I was confused. Do you live in the neighborhood?
I live on the other corner of section sixteen. I'm part of the community council, but my parents live in that church property, so I don't know.
Okay. So when you had these meetings at the church, was there, how, how was the announcements circulated? How were the announcements circulated?
New agenda for the community council meetings and the resolutions that came out a bit like for the plat that was in two thousand eight.
Um.
Very unanimous.
And when was the date for that?
Of the community council meeting?
Uh huh.
I've got it in my file, but I didn't bring it tonight, but two and a half ago or so.
And
That was the most recent one. There was more than one because we had a couple other similar ideas before this one.
And were they showing these proposals?
Like I said, not specifically these, but like I said, we talked in terms of multiple housing, senior housing, low income housing, and so on. And they were very happy about it.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you have a?
No, I'm, you, I'm just playing with
You're playing with your screen. Are there further questions for Mr. Benjamin? Apparently not. Thank you for coming out this evening. Anyone else wish to testify? Anyone at all? I'm, if not, I'm going to conclude the hearing and invite the petitioner back up for closing comments. There's no one else that wants to testify on this matter. Mr. Bateman? You have six, five minutes left. Let's give him six. Something happened to that one. There wasn't another? Okay. Yes, sir. Do you have further comments?
I would just like some clarification.
And could you state your name?
I'm sorry, I'm John McGrew, and I'm part of the, Madam Chair, part of the development team, and part of Lumen. And Connie, I was just wanting to get some clarification. Were you giving us an option to either plating the property out or going through a public hearing or?
I was.
Okay.
I mean, I was asking if there is going to be another public process, because I do think the neighborhood deserves to have input, and the community council deserves to have input on this particular plan. And if you were going to go to the planning board, then that would satisfy my concerns. Otherwise, I am going to have to follow my sword here and ask for a public site plan review because it is something that I think is important. Despite the quality of this development, we have seen over a period of years, a lot of condominium development that has not been subject to any sort of public input. And I feel that there is, there is an opportunity for change in that public policy. And we, and this commission has in the past, on other rezones, particularly as it relates to higher density, on medium density, required a public site plan review. And I don't want to hold you up. I'm very sensitive to the
I think, I think either way, hold us that for some additional time that I think will really threaten us, our ability to build this summer. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton?
I'm sorry, a couple of questions. One, on the buildings that you've labeled as senior housing as a condition, it says that they shall face Lake Otis Parkway. So how do you interpret that?
Interpret that to mean that the, the desire of physical planning and, is that the building be close to the street?
Uh huh.
And that we don't have a situation where you have big parking lots adjacent to the street. And that we will set the building, much like you see in our plan, near the street, and then the parking will be behind it. That's, that's a sort of a, a planning principle that produces good cities. Hold the line, hold the corner, and don't have these big areas of parking out along the street edge. So that's, I interpret that to mean that we will put the parking behind the entrance to the building will be on the side where the parking is. But the elevation of the building will be composed, and it's our intention to, to use those two buildings and the circulation, the vertical circulation of the building on the, on each end is a sort of gateway element that's, that, that brings a lot of light and color into the entrance from, from Northern Lights, or from Lake Otis River. I guess what I would like to request, if, if you are going to take an action regarding requiring a plat or a public hearing, our preference would be not to, but if it is voted, as that was a requirement, we'd like to have an option. So we, so we can review, would be the best way to go.
Okay.
Actually, I'm not, I didn't, I still beat on that question. I didn't quite get what I needed out of that.
Oh, okay. Mr. McLaughlin is the first one in the queue here.
And, and that would be my next step, is to say, what does Mr. McLaughlin mean when he says face Lake Otis? Does that mean front doors and front windows facing Lake Otis?
The goal would be not to have a, a blank walls abutting this arterial road.
Okay, so it doesn't, you're not thinking that would be the fronts, the entryways and so on on that side necessarily?
I, I think that the, the department would not specify, be so rigid. They'd leave it up to the, the designers, the architects.
I'm going to bring us back on track. We have before us a zoning case. We have absolutely nothing before us regarding a site plan or a site plan review, and that's what we're talking about. If we want to have one of the conditions of approval of the zoning, a requirement that there be a site plan at a future point in time, a public hearing site plan review, a non-public hearing site plan review, we can do that. But we cannot sit here and talk about anything to do with the site plan now. The time to do that is when we have a site plan. We can talk about in our, if we get to the point where we have a motion on the floor to approve this, and if there's such a condition as to, for a requirement requiring a site plan, then we can at that point articulate what our desires might be. But right now, we're still at the point where we're asking questions of the petitioners. Actually, they still have four minutes of their rebuttal time left. And we're, we've kind of run amok. It's my fault. I've allowed us to run amok. So no more running amok. We're going to allow them to talk about what they want to talk about for the next four minutes and to respond to that. So I'm resetting the conversation. And petitioners, if you have something else to share with us, you have four more minutes
Well, I think that, that you're right. The issue is that should this, what zoning should be applied to this? We intend to go forward with the project. We've been working with the city staff for seven or eight months. And for all intents and purposes, we've already had a massive level of review of this project with input from staff. So I'm not sure, I don't understand what would be gained by a public hearing. The public has been, this, this project is no secret. We, we posted, the neighbors have been invited to comment, and we've not received any, that I know of, unless it's recently. So I think this, this, and given the level of support that we have inside zoning staff, I don't see where it would be accomplished. But that's not, you know, that's my opinion. That is the, that's the way we get this thing in the ground this summer.
Okay. I have questions, I think I have questions from commissioners. Maybe they've changed their minds. Mr. Weddleton, did you have questions for the petitioner?
I do, and it's, it's not regarding the site plan review, it's regarding one of the department recommendations, which is that, I just find the recommendations C not crystal clear on when they say facing Lake Otis. And a concern would be, and I understand these are just schematics, you know, but we are looking at a solid white wall facing the road, which I think you recognize, that's not a good plan.
No, that's not what's going to happen.
Unwinnable city principle there, and you want to do it. So, but, but when it says shall face Lake Otis, you know, I'm thinking, oh, the entryways are there, and it's like, you've got your little steps and so on. But that's clearly not what you're talking about, but I think it's open to that interpretation. So I'm looking for some alternate wording that might describe something. But moving on, I'll think about that. Now, getting back to the community council notification, I say for a rezone, there, there are requirements that the community council be notified. So they were notified of this rezone after this meeting, correct?
Yes, the community council was routed, this application which you have in front of you, they did not send us a letter stating anything.
Okay. And my understanding of that community council, this is a very active community council. They pay attention to what's going on, and I actually find it a little unusual that they didn't respond to something like this.
Well, I can't guess why we didn't receive comment, but that usually means that it was, there was no objection to it. This is an active community council. We've not, it hasn't appeared to be controversial.
Okay. And then for a rezone, you mail a notice to every property owner within 500 feet?
600 feet. Also, there'll be a second public hearing in front of the assembly. This was advertised in the newspaper. It'll be advertised in the newspaper again.
And the only issue on this is 600 feet is the church, a park, a school, and five?
Well, it depends. It goes out to so many parcels.
Minimum of 50.
Oh, okay. Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Pease, do you have a question for petitioners?
Quick question to staff regarding the application. The staff packet referenced Transportation, TIA, on page eight of the staff packet. In looking for the TIA, it appeared that it was based on some previous configuration that included businesses. I'm looking at the document, the application, and traffic impact analysis prepared May 30th by Ron Bateman. So is staff, the staff looked at something more updated, and staff feels that the traffic impact analysis warrants no further?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, yes, there's no need for further discussion of traffic impacts. I can describe why. The original site plan showed commercial buildings, which generate a much, much higher traffic count than do residences. And those were the traffic numbers that drove the traffic impact analysis, and traffic reviewed those, had no problems with the site plan as having commercial buildings. And so with the revised site plan showing those commercial buildings converted into elder housing or multifamily residential, whatever you want to call it, the traffic engineer, Bob Kneefel, explained to me that he had no concerns, neither did fire, because it would generate much less traffic than what they evaluated for.
Thank you for putting that on the record.
Okay. I have no one left in the queue. So, Ms. Yoshimura?
I have one more question for the petitioner.
Certainly.
Okay.
Mr. Bateman?
I'm wondering if you would have any objection to the rezone, having an effective clause to it upon the signing of the subdivision agreement with PMNE, approval of the civil plans by AWU, and the posting of the appropriate guarantees for the work?
I'm not sure I can answer that right now. Don't, I, what, are you asking if we would provide a bond?
No, I'm just trying to see if you would, if you would have any objection to an effective clause for the rezone. In other words, the rezoning would not, would have a special limitation on it that it would not become effective until those three items occurred. This would not prevent you from pre-sales. It would guarantee your rezone, but the rezone would not be effective unless these things happened.
And that is, so what the things are that we would enter into agreement with PMNE?
Could you repeat?
Yes. Upon the signing of the subdivision agreement with PMNE, approval of the civil plans by AWU, and the posting of the appropriate guarantees for the work. In other words, this rezone would not be effective unless you actually proceeded with the construction of this project.
I don't think we could proceed with those anyway because those are conditions that would permit.
Right.
So I'm not sure what would be accomplished.
What would be accomplished is that if this project did not go through, the zoning would remain as PLI.
See, I wouldn't object to that, would you? I don't think I would object to that, actually.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I have a question of Connie related to that subject. If I was a homeowner and I bought that property, I bought a condo, and I was a pre-sale, and they didn't do one of those things, then theoretically, it's still a PLI, and they can't build what I've bought. Is that correct?
If I can respond through the chair. A pre-sale, a pre-sale is really only a reservation that converts into a purchase agreement once there is a public offering statement and, in most cases, the property is under construction. So it does not have any sort of negative impact.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, to your last point, the department believes that a special limitation requiring the owner to enter into an improvement to public places agreement is not necessary. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for development, the property owner would have to enter into an agreement with PMNE and post guarantees. The developer already knows this. They have coordinated with PMNE on the project and AWU. The department doesn't see what would be gained by requiring a subdivision agreement or improvement to public places agreement prior to the rezoning becoming effective. It's sort of out of order, or it's putting one thing before the other that is not, is unusual. The department evaluated the merits of the rezone request in terms of the standards for a rezone. We found that the rezone from PLI to R3 meets the standards. This is, this is not a question of speculative development. Any development under the R3 zoning regulations and the special limitations will be appropriate, whoever develops the property. The question before the commission is whether the rezone to R3 is appropriate and not what will be built.
Okay. Mr. Eishem?
Madam Chair, I don't think we, it's appropriate for us to put on that type of a limitation simply because once it gets, if it's, as staff said, if it's appropriate to rezone at R3, it's appropriate to rezone at R3, and it's really none of our business as to what gets built there. Now, we can put something on, as Ms. Yoshimura suggested, that we could require either a non-public or a public site plan review if they decide to build something. But I don't think we want to put a restriction that requires these things to be met before the actual rezone takes place.
And unless we have something new, I'm going to stop the questioning. Ms. Yoshimura?
I do have one more comment that I would like to make regard that, regarding that. We have heard testimony today that this project has gone through several reconfigurations, including at some point in time, commercial property, potential commercial property.
We can address this in a motion.
All right.
And comment on it when we have a motion on the floor. And we're done. The hearing's closed, and it's now time for us to have a motion before us. And I'm waiting. Mr. Phelps?
In the case involving a rezone from PLI to R3 at the location of the Avenue Christian Center, Track A3, Propap 08072, located as indicated in the memorandum, I would move for the approval of the rezoning to R3, subject to the following special limitations. And these are the three special limitations noted in the staff packet on page 10.
Okay. And it's been seconded by Ms. Dean. Would you care to speak to your motion, Mr. Phelps?
Well, I think that really what we're talking about here is the resibility of the rezoning of this area from Ms. Cardzoning, which is PLI over to multifamily residential. Frankly, I agree with staff. I think this is a good location for residential. I think that the reasons for supporting this request were legitimate reasons. It could become commercial, but I think that the argument that commercial is not occurring on that side of the road is a good argument for continuing with the type of land use they're recommending here. I do not think that this is really the time to get into the issues of the desire of the project. For me, the issue is, does it make sense for this area to be rezoned to R3? And the answer I come out with is yes, it does make sense.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton?
I'd like to offer an amendment to Special Limitation 1C. And I'd like to suggest that it read, "Buildings abutting the Lake Otis Parkway shall have all parking placed to the east of the buildings."
Yeah, I accept that.
Okay. Does Ms. Dean accept it?
Did she accept it?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I offer that just for clarity.
Okay. Did everyone understand that change? Okay?
I could offer some findings.
Any, we need some findings.
I'd offer, from the staff packet, they've noted that on page four, that this conforms to the comprehensive plan. On page seven, they've noted that it conforms to the land use plan map, and it brings the area in closer conformity to allow residential development to support the town center. They've also noted on page eight that a traffic impact analysis was done that shows that this is properly designed. They've also noted, staff has noted, that the minimum of 12 DUA is a minimum to support efficient transit, which is important to the success of a town center. Also discussed that this was not zoned B3 in order to support residential development and to limit commercial to the west of Lake Otis in this area. We've had concerns that, we don't have a comment from the community council, though we've noted that this is a very active community council, and they have been notified of this issue and chose not to respond. I've also been told that they were notified of the replat that led to this stage of the development, and that they did support that replat.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick?
One minor correction. I think you slightly misspoke the intent of not rezoning to B3 was to limit commercial development to the east of Lake Otis, and you said west.
Please correct that then. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Pease?
I just wanted to speak particularly in favor of the minimum of 12 dwelling units per acre. That is a density that helps to support the concept of the town center, and also is appropriate immediately adjoining this transit corridor. And I guess the other thing would be, because of the school, church, and parks surrounding it, this density does not affect existing lower density. There is none around it.
I will just add that this also will, you know, provide housing for employees of the existing businesses that are in the area. There are already a substantial amount of businesses to the west of this location, and it will be, especially with it being a transit corridor, this will be, provide much-needed housing in a more modest price range for people that are working in those service sectors in the area. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing done. That is approved, and we'll go forward to the assembly. Have a good evening. Okay, moving on.
Do you want these back? I think I wrote, the only thing I wrote was that top right corner, if you need them. I'm going to use it again.
Here, would you like to keep this to have, send it to the assembly? Yes, you can, if anyone wants to share their bound books with the petitioners, save a few And the last item, no, we have two items left on our list. I wish. I think I have a scratchy throat. Okay, G4, case number 2009-111, an ordinance amending Anchorage Municipal Code, Chapter 2147, to add new, a new section, 2147-115, procedures and standards for assigned variance, and amending Anchorage Municipal Code, Section 213180, to establish a procedure for appeals. Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case was before the commission on October 5th and was postponed due to the malfunction of the MOA online notice of public meetings. Also, there was a request from the commission that staff contact some sign companies in town to let them know of this proposed amendment to the signed ordinance, which staff has done.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Ferguson, my apologies.
Quite all right. The Anchorage Municipal Code has procedures for obtaining variances under AMC 2115010. However, these were devised to determine variances dealing with land uses and are not suited to addressing the particulars of signed variances. New sign regulations were approved in 2003. At that time, the Urban Design Commission was given authority to grant variances to sign regulations, but the sign regulations did not include procedures and standards for evaluating the merits of a request for variance, nor did the sign regulations include an appeals procedure. This amendment to the ordinance attempts to rectify this matter. At the last meeting, Commissioner Weddleton had proposed some changes to the signed ordinance. Staff has incorporated those into the ordinance that's before the commission tonight. I believe that's all I have.
Okay. Are there questions of staff? Mr. Phelps?
Just going back to the discussion we had on this previously, my recollection is that this particular structure or format for the variance procedure is similar to other variance procedures of a similar nature. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. For those matters that, you know, that pertain to the signed variances, yes, I kept those. And then other ones had to drop out that didn't make any sense when reviewing signed variances. And then I added those, and I based those on signed variances standards from other cities that I researched.
Okay. So essentially, what's happened is that you've taken some structure and then basically refined it in order to be more specific to this particular process then?
That's true.
Right. Has this gone before municipal attorney at all for review?
Yes, extensively. Both municipal attorney and then one of the assistant attorneys have both reviewed it.
And so did they have any changes to it?
They did.
And they incorporated those?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Yoshimura?
My question has to do with either an as-built survey or a plot plan no less than two years old from date of application, and I'm wondering how we came, how staff determined the acceptable age of the as-built or plot plan?
Through the chair, Ms. To the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, that is the same language that's in variances now for land use variances?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, if there are no further questions, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone that would like to testify on this matter to come forward. Seeing and hearing no one, public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the commission? Mr. Weddleton?
Regarding case 2009-111, An Ordnance Amending Anchorage Municipal Code, Chapter 21.47, to amend the procedures and standards for obtaining variances for the signed standards and to establish an appeals procedure, I move for approval as presented.
Okay, and that's been seconded by Ms. Pease. You wish to speak to your motion?
The changes that were made in response to comments I made at our previous look at this, I think could possibly help lower the cost of the variance and meet the municipality's goals, which is a benefit. And we were concerned at our previous meeting that we did not have proper particip, or significant participation with only one person in the sign business who could possibly address this with that kind of knowledge. So we postponed with an attempt to get more input and apparently failed at that, but we need to move on.
Mr. Morrison?
Just a couple of comments. One, I wanted to make a comment to Ms. Ferguson. Thank you for taking this back and reviewing it. It's, the signed ordinance issue has been troublesome all the way through, so anything that seems to come up with it, it seems to be like a tar baby. Once you touch it, you just can't get away from it. So it'll be nice to have this finalized. I did hear a comment that was made through the chamber, and their comment was after reviewing it, they did not see that this was going to be an issue or a problematic thing for, at least the chamber folks on it. And so it, I will tell you, after working on the signed ordinance several years ago, the biggest frustration with it is, nobody responds. And they don't respond until they get fined and realize that they're not, or that they're in violation. Or if they have to go get a variance, they don't respond until they find out how cumbersome, whether it's our standard process in all variances, or specifically to this one, how difficult it really is. So I just think unfortunately, people stumble into this kind of uninformed. I am in support of the motion, and I think it's time for it to move on.
Okay. Any further comments? Any objection? Hearing none, that will go forward to the Assembly. Now, we are finally at the last item on our agenda, which is item E. Backtracking, E1, which is the amendment to the Long Range Transportation Plan regarding the Connect Arm Crossing, or more appropriately, the Long Range Transportation Plan Amendment to Delay the Connect Arm Crossing. Would staff please bring us up to date? Ms. Underwood?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a public hearing on this matter in November, on November 9th, and the public hearing was closed, and the body decided to consider some revisions to, I believe, the earlier, to reiterate the earlier resolution of the Planning and Zoning Commission that was signed on June 15th, 2009. And in the meantime, we provided some additional information to the commission for today's meeting in an effort to respond to your questions, and it's in your packets. And I spoke with Ms. Pease on the telephone today. She's providing some revisions, and you should have this at your table also. It's an email from Nancy Pease to me, Commissioner Pease to me, and Ms. Pease may have some comments. We were discussing one of the bullets under finding A2 about traffic projections, and she, based on our conversation, she may want to revise that finding. So as I understand it then, today, you're going to consider taking action on this amendment. And the amendment is to, well, what you're being asked to do is to provide a recommendation to the Assembly to adopt, as part of the comprehensive plan, a revision to the LRTP, to delay the Connect Arm Crossing from the short term to the long term, and to make a recommendation to the Policy Committee of AMATS to approve the same LRTP amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Mr. Weddleton?
Just two comments. One is, when I moved to postpone this end of the meeting, I hope that wasn't interpreted by, there were people from Cabada here, and I, now they're not. So I hope that I didn't drive them away. But looking at the packet we got today, there's a number of comments on page two, item three. It says, "Updated model for traffic will be available by mid-December." And further on, it said it would be better to wait for the new projections. There's, well, there's a couple of points in here that it suggests that we should wait. And is that staff's recommendation? We should wait till this data is available, or it's time to move on?
Through the chair, through the chair. The idea was, if you wanted an answer to the question about more recent data, then we should wait. If you can, if you feel comfortable going ahead and making, making your decision tonight without that information, then that's fine too. We get the sense that the traffic projections are going to be different from what they were in 2005. The extent to which they will be different is unknown. We don't know if it's going to be drastically different, unfortunately, or moderately different. But it will be different because of the assumptions. We're now in an economic downturn, and some of the assumptions are different from what other assumptions are different.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Pease?
I had a couple of things. First, we had asked for various pieces of information at the last meeting, and one of them which seems conspicuously absent was our request for a clear, simple layperson's financial picture from Cabada. And the mailing of the packet, you said this would be provided when it was given to you. So I take it that Cabada has not prepared that for us?
I heard from Mr. Hemingway today, after 4:30, that essentially the first six pages of the documents they had provided to you all, Cabada's responses to PNC questions was basically their information. I think you all got a spiral-bound document in June, I stated June. So that, I'm sorry to say, that's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. I did, you mentioned that to me at 5 o'clock, and I did take a look at that document, and I couldn't see that it met our request. So I just wanted the rest of the commission to hear that that's how they chose to respond. Also, I asked you about your response, number four, in which you wrote, "Staff approached muni financial personnel regarding a possible review of the Connect Arm Crossing financial analysis," and they responded to you that this might be served in another way and perhaps later in the process. In other words, they didn't really want to answer that request. Did they give you any reasons for that?
I don't think it was that they didn't want to answer. I think, I think, I think the thought was that the Planning and Zoning Commission's primary responsibility is to address the effect of this bridge on development in Anchorage, and that while it may be, it may affect your decisions about the financing details, that that's really something for another venue, for another group of people to look at.
And was the discussion point raised that the development, the land use patterns are substantially affected by the money available for transportation infrastructure? Our common theme is that transportation funding and planning go hand in hand with land use, planning and funding?
Through the chair. I was not privy to those conversations. Mr. Wilber spoke with people in the finance department.
Okay. Mr. Phelps?
Couple of questions. I guess I don't really understand what the recommendation is. I'm looking at page four, and there's a listing of the actions the commission is asked to take, and the first is concur with the delay of the crossing project from short term to long term. So what is the difference between, what is short term and what is long term, and what does it mean by going from short to long term?
That's a good question.
Oh, good.
Short term is, let me see how it's defined, in the current chapter 12. There's a table in chapter 12 that shows. The years, there should be in the amendment, ah, it's the document that you got last time. I'm sorry. I don't remember the years. It's, short term, I think, is through 2018, and long term is from 2018 out to, it's the last 10 years of the LRTP. What the effect of this is going to be is a record of decision is earnestly sought by Cabada for this project. They've made it very clear that that's their goal. They want to do it. They want to build this project. The technical advisory committee and the policy committee would prefer to allow Cabada to continue spending the money they have. They have approximately $60 million remaining to do the work that they are doing right now in the environmental phase and some of the design, design work. Moving it out to the long term may cause the Federal Highway Administration to be less enthusiastic to approve the record of decision right now. There's a possibility that an environmental document such as this could become stale over time, and some of the work, it's possible, might have to be redone down the road. What it does is it buys some time for the municipality to make sure that the municipality's concerns are addressed, and that the environmental concerns and work that has to be done will be done, and that this project will continue to have some kind of oversight. If it stays in the short term, we understand that there's about a year's worth of work remaining for, to complete the environmental work, and then the project can be built. Despite the, despite the conditions in the Long Range Transportation Plan, your concern, the concerns that the municipality has, it's not like, it's, it's unknown if Cabada would be energetic in responding to the municipality's concerns, if they have a green light with an approved record of decision.
Well, I guess my understanding was that in order for something of this type to proceed, as much as involves federal funds, that you're going to have to have this project included as part of the Long Range Transportation Plan?
Oh, it does have to be in the Long Range Transportation Plan, and all we're doing is moving it out to the longer term. A record, they could still get a record of decision, but I think it's right away.
So I'm not quite sure how I can say this tactically, but the municipality supports the concept of the crossing, or it does not?
The municipality has always supported the concept of a-crossing, not particularly this design. This design is, is not going to be able to support heavy rail, and it doesn't have, it's not multimodal. In Phase 1, there will be no pedestrian amenities, and Cabada has told us also that, well, during some earlier AMATS meetings back in April, they let us know that they were, they were interested in pursuing rail, for example, heavy rail. And the technical advisory committee was very interested in that. And since that time, they've cooled their heels on adding rail, and what would have to happen is that the railroad, for example, would have to put up the money to do the additional environmental impact statement. At first, they told us that the bridge would be rail-compatible, that it would be able to support rail. But we understand that to mean that just the approaches would be able to support rail, not that the bridge structure itself would support rail, heavy rail.
I guess what I'm concerned about is that a recommendation that we have here basically advances a project that we don't want. I mean, just moves it from short term to long term, and I'm especially concerned with a number of things, but particularly the comment you're making that there needs to be design flexibility and structural flexibility in the bridge to accommodate light rail. That's certainly a possibility in the future, and it sounds like they're not willing to provide that flexibility. And I don't know if we are going to be well-served by just delaying a project that is not a project that we desire to have, or at least a design of the project that we'd like to have. So I guess I'm just, I'm still kind of wrestling with the idea of what does the municipality gain by simply pushing it to the future, other than possibly just pushing the conflict into the future?
Well, it allows them to complete the work that they're doing now, and to have a better understanding of what the environmental agency's requirements will be, especially that this area has been declared a, or has been nominated to be a critical habitat?
No, it's a, if you have a threatened species, it's a beluga whale, and it's problematic if they can put a structure in there because of that ruling. I think it was a federal ruling, and they also be a state as well, too. But, you know, from what I know of the Environmental Procedure Act is that if you're pushing it forward into the future, let's say by 15 years or 10 years, the environmental work you do now is going to be stale.
It could be.
And they're gonna have to do it all over again.
That's a factor. That is a consideration.
And the other factor, too, that I don't think a lot of people recognize is that a lot of the population assumptions that were made were assuming that there was going to be extensive residential, extensive residential development in the area called Fish Creek. Fish Creek is west of Little Susitna River, and also, yeah, Little Susitna River, and east of the Big Sioux. And what they've been finding is that there is not money available from the Federal Highway Administration for a bridge crossing there. And so the population projections are not going to be at a high level. And that realization has, has come to an official agreement from the borough in the adoption recently of their Fish Creek management plan that basically tamps down those population projections because of the lack of the crossing, the crossing in this case, of Little Susitna River. So if you go back to the comment that the transportation analysis may be different in the future, my feeling would be is that if you're tamping down those population projections by a significant amount, which you are, you are not going to have the same feasibility for that bridge at all. And if you go ahead with a recommendation to cause it to be delayed, you'll then have a situation potentially of getting the project into the plan, and it'll be stuck there for a period of time. And nobody's going to question anything because it's in the plan. So, I mean, it- So, I mean, this is, to me, there's a lot of problems with this, but I suppose I should not talk anymore right now, because I'm making a statement as opposed to asking a question.
Yes, you are, but since you, when you don't talk often, but when you do, goodness, Mr. Phelps. Okay, Mr. Frederick, you're next.
There was an announcement the other day that I'm sure everybody's aware of, and I imagine people that are in the transportation business and close to the environmental process more than some, but NOAA that they intend to, what's the right word, reserve about a third, the upper third of Cook Inlet?
Mm-hmm.
Which would apparently require another level of oversight over any development in that, in that reserved area, and I wonder, I mean, that's, that's another complication in the, in the, in the plan, is it not?
Yes, it is. Through the chair. I was unable to find out in the time that I had what the, what that would mean.
Yeah, I didn't see any clarity in it either, and I'm sure, I know the port's concerned about it, and, and, as they, well, they should be.
Yep.
But it, it would seem to me to, to create another, another level of concern over whether this project is, is viable in its current form or not. There's been a lot of discussion about whether, whether the, approving environmental agencies were, were going to allow the, the, the short span that Cabada's proposing as opposed to a, to a longer runout of the, of the bridge, which would be fantastically more expensive. And, and this would add another, another level of, of, I would assume, bottom line cost to, to the project if, if this plan has what its apparent effect is going to be.
Through the chair. There was a work session with Cabada and the AMATs committees in, last month, and, now, this was before the announcement that NOAA made recently, but they said they'd been working with other agencies in, in Washington State in a similar project that had a species of stellar sea lions.
I saw something about that.
And they've found that timing, the timing of what they're doing has more impact than what they're doing. That, it's hard to say how this is all going to play out.
Well, just as a reminder, we need to look at this from a land use impact and on Anchorage. We shouldn't focus so much on those environmental things. That's the federal government's job and the state's job. Our scope is looking at the impacts on, on Anchorage. Mr. Isham.
Do we want to get this thing as a motion so we can start talking about it, or do we just want to sit here and chat away?
Well, then, I think, yes, someone can make a motion, and I see Ms. Pease has been in, in the queue. Are you going to make the motion, Ms. Pease?
Well, I had some questions to ask staff before I did so, but I thought that's important.
Well, but you know what, these, we should have had most of our questions asked by now. Really.
Ma'am, chair, I had a list, but I only got a couple of them off. Well, I will make the motion, but could I first just clarify a couple of
Sure.
points with Ms. Underwood that during her conversation with, I think, Mr. Phelps, or one of the previous speakers. Ms. Underwood, when asked whether the municipality supports a crossing, you said, "Not this one, because it doesn't include rail and pedestrian facilities." Would it be accurate to say that the municipality has quite a long list of unresolved concerns that staff has brought forth to the commission previously, and that remain, that are land use related, such as impacts to the AC couplet, the doubling of traffic there, outflow of industrial uses to the other side of the arm, probable reduced property values, impacts to Government Hill, sprawl being cheaper than redevelopment and infill, it would set back our attempts to achieve that land use pattern here. Isn't there an additional long list of reasons why the municipality has serious concerns about this project?
Yes, through the chair, yes, that's correct. In the First Amendment, for the first draft amendment, where we were recommending taking it out of the project, of the LRTP altogether, there was an expanded background section that was provided in the back of the LRTP amendment, and all of those issues were identified in that background section.
Thank you. Just wanted that to be clear on the record, and there was one other point that came out of earlier discussion with commissioners. Ms. Underwood, you stated that one of the assumptions for placing the Kinnick Arm Crossing on the long-term plan would be that it may, and I emphasize the word "may," postpone a record of decision. Earlier, this commission found in response to staff analysis that if the project is on the LRTP, the Federal Highway Administration can issue a record of decision at any time.
I believe that's the case. I, through the chair, I'm sorry, through the chair. I did ask Central Region DOT recently if that was the case, and, but that's what we had been told earlier, that's what we accepted as one of our findings, and we further accepted that the conditions of the LRTP may not be easily enforced or may not be negotiable after this record of decision, that there's some kind of agreement to proceed, and the municipality is not a party to that, that that's, this was partly from conversation with you earlier today, that there would be a, some kind of an agreement to proceed with DOT, Federal Highway Administration, and Cabada.
Yes.
And the municipality is not part of that? It's through the chair. The municipality is not a party to that, and I don't know how the municipality could become a party to that agreement, but I, um, that's through, that, the part, the three parties are Cabada, Federal Highway Administration, and DOT.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to clarify that with regard to your statement about what happens when a, a record of decision may be delayed, but it may not be, and then the municipality might not be as active a party.
Yes, and through the chair. We are being, we are kind of being led to believe that if, if the project is in the long term, then FHWA will not make a record of decision. They don't like to do it, but they could if they wanted to.
For example, if they wanted to clear these stacks of papers off of their desks the way we do. Thank you.
Are you ready to do the motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Ma'am chair, I move, and you'll have to guide me here, I, I move to, in the matter of resolution 2009-031, I move to recommend that the Kinnick Arm Crossing be deleted from the long-range transportation plan, with the reiteration of the findings of fact that we passed in June of 2009, with a couple of additional changes. And those are.
Okay.
I'm looking now at the resolution that we passed. We had several wherethes, one of which gave the cost of Phase One and Phase Two, and I would like to add for a total cost of 1.5 to 1.6 billion dollars. We made a finding A2 about the substantial risk of the project, and I would like to add a couple of points that illustrate that risk. These are on the handout that I sent, that was passed out. One is, the independent engineering study by the National Constructors Group, completed in January 2009, suggested that state or local financial participation is necessary for the Kinnick Arm Crossing to move forward, in stating that, quote, "The project will not be economically feasible if proposals are received wherein all risks are passed on to the contractor," end quote. Additional Federal Highway Trust funding seems unlikely because of shortfalls in 2008 and 2009 in this national fund. The risk appears to fall on Anchorage via AMATs to make up funding shortfalls for the bridge. I would also add to finding A2, under the sub-bullets, that Cabada trip projections have not been adjusted to reflect higher gas prices and lower economic growth rates during the global recession that began in 2008. And here, I'm going to make some modifications to what I've handed out to you. Cabada trip projections appear unrealistic. For example, Cabada projects 16,500 one-way trips three years after the bridge opens, which is the same per-lane traffic volumes of current daily traffic on the six-lane Glen Highway between Eagle River and Anchorage. Next bullet, there's been no independent technical review of the total revenue estimates developed by Cabada. Our last time we voted on this, I would put the date of that last vote, June 15, 2009. Two more findings. I would put in a new finding, inserted where appropriate in the list, as follows. The Phase One Bridge continues to be designed for vehicles only, failing to serve pedestrian, bicycle, rail freight, or light rail travel. This limitation contradicts the comprehensive plan's goals to increase multimodal and intermodal access and reduce reliance on vehicular travel, and raises concerns about competitiveness for Anchorage freight facilities. And finally, I would consider a new finding, if, and this I don't have written down for you, if the Kinnick Arm Crossing remains on the LRTP, a new condition should be added to the LRTP, excuse me, shall be added to the LRTP, that the municipality of Anchorage be a fully empowered party in negotiating any agreement to proceed among FHWA, Cabada, and DOTPF, with the intent that the municipality needs to advocate on its own behalf to resolve unmet concerns, fund unmet impacts, and ensure that conditions for the Kinnick Arm Crossing in the LRTP are enforced, and that any draft agreement to proceed will receive a public review and comment, period.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton, you second that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And did you get that last one? Will you provide the secretary with that language for the last one?
I will.
Okay. And did you wish to speak to your motion, Ms. Pease?
Yes, and I'm sure I won't cover all the points. We heard tonight that continuing this project in the long-range transportation plan does not guarantee a postponed a record of decision. Apparently, the record of decision can come at any time. There is no guarantee that by leaving the project on the Kinnick Arm Crossing that all of our serious, multiple concerns will be worked out before a record of decision. We know there's several dangers to having a record of decision without those resolutions of our problems or our concerns. Among those are the fact that the municipality of Anchorage becomes a weak partner and has a very diminished ability to enforce the LRTP conditions, such as some of the financing conditions, impacts to neighborhoods, traffic through downtown, and who pays for it, reduced property values, and so on. In addition, we've heard previously, it wasn't mentioned again tonight, but we've heard previously that once there's a record of decision, if we don't go ahead with the project for reasons of our budget, we may have to pay back $44 million, I think I have that figure right, to the, to the FHWA. Our findings have been expensive in the past. I have reviewed all of them carefully. I won't reiterate them all for the, the record, but just to summarize in saying that studies have shown that the Kinnick Arm Crossing project does not contribute to a net increase in regional economic growth. What it does is shift population and slow down the economic growth on the Anchorage side in favor of the Mat Sioux side. This radical affects our intended land use and economic growth pattern of infill and redevelopment of vibrant, more compact urban neighborhoods. So this project is not, goes against the cornerstone implementation strategies of the Anchorage 2020 Comprehensive Plan and the Downtown Comprehensive Plan, as well as numerous other adopted plans and policies.
Mr. Weddleton.
I just, before I start, make one thing clear. Now, your starting point is a resolution from June. Is that correct?
Thank you. Um, yes, the starting point would be the resolution from June with modifications, including the continued recommendation to delete the Kinnick Arm Crossing from the long-range transportation plan.
Okay, I have a few other changes to recommend, and then some findings. And one is in the third whereas to add, which lists public hearings on May 18 and June 1, 2009, add and November 9 of 2009. Regarding finding 22, just a small edit, it's on the, it's beginning of the last line, it says "Buck the Bridge," and it should say "Put the Bridge." And on the last page, page C, change the wording to update it to documents that we have in front of us. Possibly, actually, I need to look at this. See, as the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the approval of Chapter 13 to include the financial plan and new federal transportation planning requirements is illustrated in the public review draft dated 9/24/09. Actually, I guess we, we need to remove that, because the current Chapter 13 moves it to the long range as a long-range product, and we're recommending it be deleted.
Be deleted.
So we are not approving Chapter 13, as has most recently been presented to us.
No.
So this needs to be reworded. I'm, I'm looking at the very last page of our resolution from June, and there's a...
It's no, it's not in there.
You're right.
Must be condition, I don't know what's going on here. It goes 28, am I on the right?
And then B, C.
I don't know what happened to A, but we got B, C.
All of the A.
Oh, all the A was everything else, okay. There you go.
I can carry all that around.
Maybe we should say the Planning and Zoning Commission does not recommend approval of Chapter 13, public review draft dated 9/24/09, period.
Through the chair, that included the financially constrained dip or something like that. I don't want to disapprove more than...
Okay, we can't toss the whole thing out. We should say, "Planning and zoning commission recommends approval of Chapter 13 to include the financial plan and new federal transportation planning requirements as illustrated in the public review draft dated 9/24/09," however, with the removal of the Kinnick Arm, deletion of the Kinnick Arm Crossing project.
Ma'am chair, I think staff could probably, they know our intent, they can come back to us and give us some magic words, if that's what we want.
Well, we're going to need to see this new resolution with all its changes, assuming we approve it.
What, four more findings? Or do we have enough?
No, you need to, if, if, well, are those all your... No, you need to, if, if, well, are those all your proposed changes?
Those are my proposed changes.
Well, then I need to see if Ms. Pease will accept those.
Yes, I will.
Okay, so now we have friendly amendments to the motion. And now, Ms. Pease?
Yes, I also wanted to say that the numbers I provided with regard to the traffic counts came from the Cabada's June 5 documentation, except for the Glen Highway traffic counts, which Ms. Underwood provided to me as DOT's counts on their online site. And then I also wanted to speak to the fact that this commission could continue to wait for information, but we seem to have passed, our effectiveness in getting that information seems to have diminished, or we've asked for several pieces of important information, and we've been told that, go back and look in our packets, or this isn't the time in the forum for this additional cost analysis, or there is no Plan B for the STIP. We're not getting the information we're asking for. We have multiple sources of information already, so I don't think that waiting for certain pieces of information at this point is productive or informative towards our decision.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Mr. Morrison?
Do we get to one of the questions out there?
Is your microphone on?
No, it is now. What is the effect by us passing a resolution that says to remove this off the long-term planning process for AMATS? And I guess I'll have a follow-up question to that if I can get an answer, so I guess maybe it's for staff. What would the effect be?
Federal Highway Administration has told us that this project has to be consistent with plans, which means it has to be in the LRTP and it has to be in the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program. So if you remove it, it will effectively kill it. They will not be able to issue a record of decision. And without a record of decision, they can't move forward. I, through the chair, I would like to say, I don't know, I, I don't know if you all know the ramifications of this, these are the state. This is a state project that...
I think we, I think we do.
Okay, I just want you all to know that. And one of the, one of the people in the, one of the public said, you know, there could be ramifications, there could be retribution for this type of action. And I don't know if that could happen or not, but...
Excuse me, Ms. Underwood, I am really sick and tired of politicians threatening the municipality of Anchorage. Shame on them. Shame on them, shame on them. All of us sitting around this table have only one thing that we're supposed to be here doing, and that's looking out for the welfare of the citizens of the municipality of Anchorage. The end. Not the state of Alaska, not the Mat Sioux borough, but the municipality of Anchorage. I am not concerned about politicians that are interested in retribution. I'll meet them any day and have a conversation with them. But right now, I am ready to make a decision on behalf of the citizens of Anchorage and what I think is best for them. And we're, in reality, Mr. Morrison, and in my experience of doing this for almost 30 years, decisions that we make are regularly ignored by the Policy Committee and by the Assembly and everyone else. So probably what we do doesn't matter to the big dogs, but in the record, it does matter to me, and it does matter, I believe, to the citizens of Anchorage. And if other people want to play politics, let them do it. But this is not a political body. We make land use decisions on behalf of the citizens of Anchorage.
Did that take care of it, Ms. Underwood?
How do you really feel?
How do I really feel? I feel like we have a job to do. And when I took my oath of office as a planning commissioner, I took it seriously, and the older I get, the more fussy I get, in case you couldn't tell.
Did you have something further to say, Mr. Morrison?
I just, I just wanted to finish with a comment on that. I mean, I understand everything you said, and I understand the process and that. But I don't think I can support the motion to eliminate it from the long-range plan, because I think that we need to have something addressed in the long-range plan. This is also such a moving target. I'm not sure this is the appropriate time to take that position and move forward. And so with that, I will be quiet for a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Eishem.
Ma'am Chair, I think that we need to attempt to kill this thing, because it's turning into a career for certain people on Cabada. And I don't know whether, no matter how much effort they put into it, I don't know if it's ever really going to happen. I just don't think that, we didn't know about it to begin with, and the money sort of dropped out of the sky. Wasn't enough with the situation. I don't think there's going to be funding to do it. It impacts on the city, as other commissioners have discussed. It doesn't fit in with our 2020 plan for compact development. We're basically, there's a limited amount of people, and if we want them to live in the city, we need to not have a bridge where they can escape, quite simply. So it's in, and we're required to look out for the best interest of the municipality. And we've heard a lot of threats and talk and stuff from people that are, you know, outside the municipality, and I'm sorry, I don't speak for them. I speak for the municipality. And I think that we're just sort of prolonging the agony if we keep this thing on the, on the long-range plan, and I think it's best to do what we have to do to try and get it, get it killed now.
I agree wholeheartedly with what you, with what Commissioner Eishem has to say, and with Ms. Jones. However, we do not live in a political vacuum, and I would like to hear a little bit more from Ms. Underwood, what the repercussions of this deletion is. And I think we were sort of interrupted with Mr. Morrison's question. So I would like to have that answer one more time, because it does impact, if we politically alienate ourselves, it does have an impact on us as a municipality that we can't ignore. I am not in favor of the Kinnikarm Crossing, and I am in favor of its deletion, but before I push the button, I really want to know what ramifications potentially we face.
Through the chair, I don't, I don't pretend to know what those ramifications could be, but for example, when, we're faced with dwindling federal highway money, and when the state looks at whether it should go to Anchorage, or the Parks Highway, or the Dalton Highway, they may have this fresh wound and just decide to go ahead and put it elsewhere, rather than spend it here on the Seward Highway, or the Glen Highway improvements, or even here in town. And, I mean, that's just what I, that's what people have said, that's what Cabada has said. And I do know that the two legislators were trying to get more oversight for this project, Johnny Ellis and his counterpart, and that died in committee. I just, I just, in my own mind, I'm just wondering what the, what the likelihood is of getting even the legislature to hear the issues of Anchorage. And maybe I shouldn't even mention what I'm thinking in my own mind, but that is a question to think about.
You're welcome. Mr. Weddleton.
I guess I will be supporting the motion, and I've got a few findings I'd like to add to our list.
Okay.
And these come from information provided to us for today's packet, that is a draft summary of the Policy Committee and Technical Advisory Committee meeting on November 17. And a couple of new points that have come up in this is, we were told that the project could accommodate rail, and at that meeting, they found that, and Cabada stated that a new EIS would be needed and would have to be pursued and funded by the Alaska Railroad Corporation. Another point made by Gordon Keith, Alaska Department of Transportation Central Region Director and Chair of the AMATS Policy Committee, was that the LRTP is not fiscally constrained if they, referring to Cabada, use state-backed revenue bonds. Further, we've had quite a bit of discussion during the public hearing regarding whether or not we should look regionally in this, at the regional impact, or more specifically just in Anchorage's interest. And cited at that meeting was Federal Regulations 23 CFR 450, where it was pointed out that metropolitan transportation planning process shall be carried out in coordination with statewide transportation planning processes, and that we should look at important national and regional transportation functions. At that meeting, it was pointed out that that regulation also says that the municipality is not required to include a regionally significant project in the LRTP for which there is no local support. And further was stated, we've had some discussion over whether or not we would have to repay funds already spent, and it was made clear at this meeting that if the project is canceled before the record of decision, no repayment will be required.
Thank you. Ms. Pease.
I just wanted to make two, two points. One is that I'm, I'm not comfortable with speculating about political retribution from persons or powers unknown. We make our best conscientious judgment on land use issues. We are not the final say on this, but other bodies who are the final say look to us for honest, complete analysis, and that's what, what we should be giving. And then also from that November meeting of the AMATS joint meeting, the, Mr. Morrison also shared that the current STIP is not fiscally constrained. In other words, it already does not have full funding to complete all the projects under current conditions, even without any obligation to assist in the funding or to back the funding of the Kinnikarm Crossing. So there already is a problem, and it's stated in the minutes of that meeting, which is in our packet, that some of the projects already affected are the Highway to Highway, Seward Highway improvements, and Seward Highway Safety Corridor. And I raise this because especially the Highway to Highway is considered a component that would be very important if the Kinnikarm Crossing were to be built, and we're already looking at maybe not enough funding to do that.
Okay, any further comments? Apparently not, and censors objection. We need to use a vote on our screens. So if you could be ready to record it.
A yes vote removes it from the...
Correct. Okay, we're just about done. We have everybody in the queue, Madam Secretary. That motion passes with Mr. Morrison objecting and Ms. Dean being recused. Our resolution will go forward to the AMATS Policy Committee and to the Assembly. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. I apologize for getting so heated, but I have real problems when I hear about political threats. It offends me so badly, and I hate political game-playing, and I know it goes on all the time, and I just feel like sitting those folks down, telling them to take a seat, and reminding them that I'm sure their mothers taught them better, in a better manner. But I, and I also recognize it's the realities of life. Anyhow, on to a common comments. I notice on our calendar that we have here that there's a director's meeting scheduled for December 17. Unless commissioners have some burning topics, they need, they feel, they feel a need to discuss with the planning director, I plan to contact Mr. Weaver tomorrow and suggest that we take a holiday during the month of December and not meet this month, and then reconvene in January. I think everyone probably has a busy, busy enough schedule with it being the end of the year coming up. Are there any comments from commissioners? We haven't done that in a long time, and it's early. Mr. Frederick?
And it's early.
Mr. Morrison, do you have any comments? Mr. Weddleton?
That enough.
Mr. Eishem? Ms. Pease?
No, I wish we could throw away the staff, but I don't think we can.
Okay. Mr. Frederick?
No, I wonder if Ms. Underwood would want to take the Delaney Park plan back to, I mean, it's got to go to the Assembly, right?
Yes.
Wouldn't these lovely documents?
She may.
Be better recycled that way than recycled that way?
Ms. Oshimura?
You know, I just have to go ahead and stop calling the board about somebody's kind of view or, 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 but I think it'd be, there are, and a couple of policies that you have, when you, when you can build 100 units, or 50 units, or 80 units, without any source of public review.
Well, we need to change our law.
That, that section of Chapter 7 has yet to be dealt with.
That's right.
And, and I know from seeing the, the stuff that's going to the Assembly Tag 21 Committee that the planning department still intends to, to address that, that particular issue, and I think we will have some input on that.
I would hope that staff would address this issue, but they may not, or, 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 well, maybe we can get some movement on that, because until the law's changed, our hands are kind of tied.
Motion to adjourn would be in order. Thank you, Ms. Pease and Mr. Frederick. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we're adjourned. We will see you next Monday. Are you go, Mr. Morrison, I want you to know I was...